Oh, there you go. Okay.
All right, are we ready?
We are live. I spoke to a Rotary at seven fifteen this morning, so I am up and moving and it's good. And told them we have been failing schools and that we're a handful of points away from A. And I gave, they love the workforce development piece. Workforce Development Rotary Club was a hit this morning. Thank you for the handouts. Yeah, I loved it. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. The School Board of the Duval County School District is now convened in its workshop meeting. According to the CDC's website, Duval County's COVID-19 community level is currently designated as low. The CDC currently recommends indoor mask wearing for people with symptoms, a positive test, or exposure to someone with COVID-19. Thank you for taking the time to join us and for your interest in the operation of the Duval School District. We are gonna start at this time with our partner Spotlight, which is I'm a Star Foundation. We have former Board Chair Betty Bernie in the house, and so we'll invite her up. And again, for those of you who are new to us, this is our continued effort to try to make sure we're informing the board and the public about our partnerships that help to enrich and enhance the work that we do in our schools. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Bernie.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair, and to the members of this wonderful school board, Duval County School Board, to the superintendent and to the superintendent's leadership team. I am pleased to be here today. I am grateful that we were invited by your illustrious chair to talk about the I'm a Star Foundation, which has been in existence since 2009. And our mission is to empower, that's a very important word for us, to empower youth to believe that they are solution-oriented stars. They are smart, they are talented, and they are resilient students who are destined to change the world. I'm going to invite with me our Chief Operations Officer that, who needs no introduction, Mr. Hank Rogers, who you all have probably seen more than you've seen me. And also our Gear Up B Coordinator and Project Manager, Bediria Kinnabrew. So we won't be here long. We just want to share with you some of the great things that are happening with and for our students, for the students in Duval County Public Schools. So what you've seen is actually information with regards to our leadership program. There are several facets to the I'm a Star Program. Our signature program is our leadership program. And what we say and what we intentionally do is that we try to create America's next generation of leaders. And then I'm gonna take the word "try." We create America's next generation of leaders because they understand that they are destined to change the world. Our young people find solutions to negative issues that are taking place for their peers. They create the solutions. And when we say that it is student-led, it is absolutely student-led. I'd love for some of you to come to some of our Saturday sessions and watch these young people as they try to make a difference. Some of the things that they did just in the 2022, 2023, 2023 school year, Mental Health Toolkits. They designed, crafted, and donated 1,000 toolkits for mental health to students in Duval County Public Schools. We gave them to full-service schools. They hosted a youth-led mental health conference and allowed kids to come in and make their own toolkits. But we also got requests. When we showed up at the school board meeting, as you can see, there are two school board members with our little Beanie Babies that were in the Mental Health Toolkits. But we had teachers and counselors asking for those toolkits, and we were able to provide them to them. The Mississippi Water Drive. Our students collected and donated 30,000 bottles of water for students in Mississippi, for Jackson Public Schools. We were able to solicit funds to pay for the truck, the driver, and the hotel accommodations to take it there. In addition to that, our students raised $6,500 in gift cards for hand sanitizer and other necessary items. And as your superiors, our beautiful superintendent, who was a major part of this Mississippi Water Drive, and Board Member Warren Jones, who came out to participate.
Also beautiful.
Also beautiful. Our Let's Move Jacksonville is another one of our signature leadership programs. It's designed to help curb childhood obesity. The purpose is to help our city eat healthier and get physically active. To date, we've had over 7,000 people participated from the time that we started in 2009. The overarching goal is to help Jacksonville become a healthier city. Our kids actually take that to heart. What touches me more than anything else that our leadership students do is that they've raised money for homeless, for their homeless peers. And they've raised over $125,000 for homeless students and families. Since 2013, they provided scholarships. Here you can see pictures of scholarships that we've given to students who are homeless. But we are able to use those funds to purchase things for families, hotels, rooms, uniforms, et cetera. Anything that will help that our students need who are homeless, we're trying to provide that to them. We're having a celebrity basketball game, July 22nd, 2023. We normally would host them every year. We couldn't because of the pandemic. But we ask celebrities to come and play in the basketball game. If any of you feel that you have any skills and want to use a boot against students, feel free. And we also can use cheerleaders. So you can be a cheerleader, you can play, or you can be a coach.
Board Member Willie is not here today, but I'd like to volunteer him.
He volunteered himself.
There you go. He's actually live streaming right now, Board Member Willie. You have been volunteered for that activity.
And we have two formature leaders on the board as well.
Okay, did you just do? I will say, I will say I am a formature leader. I will admit to that.
Happy to have you.
There you go. We're there.
And then the final thing that they've done this year is the Youth-led Mental Health Conference, where they had sessions for students and parents. It was well-attended. This was led by students. We had many vendors. But the students designed it so that parents could understand what's happening with youth mental health. And now, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Rogers to talk about Gear Up A.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
So we have been honored to serve the students with Gear Up A since the seventh grade. And so we have been with them, and they are now seniors this year. And we get to see them graduate and walk the stage. As we say to our parents, we are always honored to serve the students at Inglewood High School, First Coast High School, John Reebok Riverside, Terry Parker West Side, and Raines High School. We are indeed honored to serve them. As you can see, we understand that students are in different categories and come. And so we, with the Gear Up program in Grant A, work with them on different levels. So with our Level Up students, those students, we feel are already where they wanna be, headed in the right track, and so they have a little touch. And so we really go with the college-going culture with that group. And so we work with them on what's their next steps. With our Impact 2023, that's our service learning project. Give them back to our community. So we work with them and that group in giving back to the community. And that group can go either way. They can go one way as far as their academics and behavior, things of that nature. They can go the other way. And so we work with them in our Impact 2023. And then our DONE group, our DONE group, and that stands for Don't Offer or Make Excuses, right, for our students. And so we work with them. They could be having some academic issues. They could be having some behavior issues. Regardless of where they are, we wanna work with them and make sure that they don't offer any excuses as it relates to moving forward and getting to the finish line to graduation. And so we really work with that group. So we work with that group. We meet with them twice a week, every week, to make sure they stay on the right track. And so that's what our group there. And then, of course, every month we have, we empower our families and keep in contact with our families and our parents so that they're engaged in the work that we're doing with their young people each and every day. So oftentimes, they like to call us instead of calling the school, and we have to refer them to the school for additional resources as it relates to that. So one of the things that we have worked on with our students from, since ninth grade, is scholarships, scholarships, scholarships. If you want off to school, we wanna make sure that you start applying for scholarships early. So we have, I think, he's at Inglewood. I believe he has a full-ride scholarship. I wanna say to the University of North Florida. And so he'll be attending the University of North Florida with a full-ride. And so we're excited about that. Many of our students have applied to, because we kinda forced them to apply. To get the money. So we're excited about the dollars. So we'll hopefully have those figures in at the end of the year as it relates to the students and where they're going off to school. And so we have students going all over the country, and we're excited about their plans. Not only that, we also are working with students if their career path is not college, and we understand that. What's your next? So that's what we've been saying this whole year. What's your next? What's next for you? And you can't come to us and say you don't know, because we've been working with you since seventh grade to help you kind of work through those challenges and work through those. So if it's career, you're working with them on their career path. If it's military, we're working with them on that. So we wanna know their post-secondary plan. And most, actually, all of our students, if you go up to them, they'll tell you what's next, and we're excited about that.
All right. And there are 350 students in the Gear Up A program that we've been working with since seventh grade, and they're doing exceptionally well. So, oh, I'm sorry.
I'll close with this, with the pictures, because this is one of the things that we're excited about. So we see students going off to their different colleges and universities. We host each month what we call College Cookies and Cupcakes for our students, where we get them together with guest speakers to talk about different career paths and different occupations within their schools. We also do have done food giveaways to help our students with community service hours, to help them with bright futures, things of that nature. And then our registered to vote campaign. Since the ninth grade, we have had our students to write personal letters to the upperclassmen to get them to register to vote, their peers. So that's been exciting. So this year, then, all of my seniors, we had them write notes to each other, encouraging them to register to vote. So we have worked with the American Red Cross, with our Holidays for the Heroes campaign, where we do cards all over the, all over the world to the militaries with the American Red Cross. And we're excited about that as well. So thank you so much as it relates to it. Ready?
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. And now we have Gear Up B, which we've been so fortunate and blessed by the school district to work with Gear Up B. And Bediria Kinnabrew is our project manager for Gear Up B.
Good morning, and it's exciting to be here to talk about what we've been able to accomplish with our Gear Up B students. I personally also worked for the Gear Up A students from seventh grade until about their tenth grade year. So to hear them doing so well is very rewarding. Gear Up B, I'm a Star Foundation, and our students, as coordinators, work with 450 students at 10 Gear Up Middle Schools, Arlington, Charger, Dupont, Highlands, Lake Shore, Matthew Gilbert, Reebok, Southside, Westside, and West U K through eight. At these schools, we segment our students into three different groups. So we work with them in college-ready mentoring and service learning. Much like Gear Up A, we work with those students in those different categories so that we can best meet their needs. Our college-ready students have worked in a college curriculum where we broaden their understanding of the importance of a college education. They've worked on SAT words. They've had the opportunity to take a career assessment and many other activities to further them in their steps toward college. We've worked with our service learning students. They put on several student-led service projects. Those service projects have included Earth Day activities, where they raise the awareness of the campus community of what Earth Day is. They made recycle planters, bird feeders. They planted gardens on their school campuses and really just added to that entire culture at the schools. Additionally, our students have participated in service learning projects with the water drive and toy drives. We've done Holidays for Heroes, just like Gear Up A. They, this year, they delivered 240 cards to the Red Cross to, for our service members that are away during the holidays. So it was a great service activity. We have a group of mentoring students. Our mentoring students meet in small groups, and they go through different topical lessons. And those lessons are an opportunity for them to broaden their academic outlook and also to make goals for themselves and for their own personal aspirations.
And unfortunately, our video doesn't work, but we had some kids from several other middle schools with Gear Up who are very proud, and they wanted to talk about what they do.
In addition to those three groups, we have parent empowerment programs each month. Our parent empowerment programs, they're fun, they're interactive, and they are informative. So we kicked off this year with Gear Up and Go. It was a fest. We had a DJ. We had activities. They had scholarships that started eighth grade that the parents were able to sign up for. So that was a great kickoff for us. We did a game night. There was also financial literacy. And the parents played this game called Fat Life. So they were given scenarios, and they had to make a budget. So the students had an opportunity to see what it's like to live on a budget and make these different plans, and then also figure out how do we start talking about planning for financing college. Another parent empowerment program that was a great success was this last month, and that was our Spring into Summer Activities Fair, where we invited different vendors to come in and talk to our parents about summer jobs, summer opportunities. They were able to sign up for summer Gear Up Camp on the spot, as well as sign up for interviews for summer jobs. So it was a great overall experience for the parents.
Thank you, Ms. Kinnabrew. And we're almost done. We have, we also worked with 21st Century Tuma. And after this video.
So we are honored to be supporting our Team Up program at San Jose, City Hills Elementary, and Hyde Park. You see the numbers there with the different programs that we have. And as you will see, if you go to any of our Team Up sites, you ask any student who they are, and they will tell you that they're stars. They're smart, talented, and resilient. And they will tell you what each one of them mean to them. And so we try to embed that into all of our students. Our goal, and I say this all the time, our goal, we wanna make it fun, but we do not waver on the academic piece in the beginning. We wanna make sure that they have the academics, and we encourage our parents as well to understand that. So academic stars at 3:30. So it goes from 3:30 to 4:15. And one of the things that we tell our parents, please do not pick up your child before 4:15, so that they can get as much academics as they can. Then when we go into our enrichment, the students don't wanna leave, because that's the fun time. But we do have different activities for them to participate in throughout their day as well. So that's our Team Up program that we're excited about as well.
And as we prepare to close, our Bridge to Success program, I get very emotional. This is very near and dear to my heart. We started in 2013 with young people who have been retained, you know, two times or even if you retain one time, and sometimes you lose hope. The fact that they still get up in the morning, wanna come to school when they're in high school, and, you know, they're overage, but that they come, is incumbent upon us with the I'm a Star Foundation to give them something that they can hold on to to be able to stay in and do what they need to do. So we work with the middle school. We provide mentoring sessions, parent empowerment. Everything that we do with I'm a Star is parent empowerment. But we also call every parent in the Bridge to Success program. We make calls to them every month, sometimes twice a month, finding out how are things going with your child? What does your child need? And then that information is provided to the counselors to make sure that they are able to assist. And if they're not able to assist, or if there's something that we can do, we can do that. But those calls to parents are critical for us. There are 100 students that we work with in the Bridge to Success middle. We do the same thing primarily for high school, but we do externships and career readiness to help them, if you're already 17 and you're in a much lower grade, we wanna still help you so that you can be able to get career-ready, do what it is that you need to do, go to college, whatever is needed. We make calls to those parents. We work with 40 students. And all of the parents, of course, in the high school group, we're getting ready for a major college fair, which will take place towards the end of May. And then our Star Mentoring, that's what we call for our elementary kids. That's what, just, it's real near and dear to me because we wanna get them ready so that they can get to that next level. For us, and I'll close with this, it's a mindset, this hope piece. And for us and everyone that we, that work with us in I'm a Star, and we've had some who didn't understand this, we've had to let them go and say goodbye. Because this means hope, providing hope, optimism. If they're not optimistic about what they can do, then we're sometimes gonna have them stagnant. But the positive thinking piece, I'm a star, I'm smart, I'm talented, and I'm resilient, and it empowers them to move on and go to the next grade level. My favorite of all of this is that we had a student, a young man, who was in the Bridge to Success Middle School program, Jess Floundering. Mr. Hank got ahold of him, and now this young man, he had a full ride to F A.
FIU.
FIU, and then ready for their master's program. So it's all about the hope. And I appreciate your being here. These are some of the sessions that we do with our mentoring students for, and mentoring is, we're the mentors. But some of the, some of the things that we work with them on, we do parent empowerment programs, and it's called Reignite, so that we can help them reignite. And as I close, our students were able to go and meet with the Surgeon General of the United States to help him understand about childhood obesity. And he came to Jacksonville to meet with them. But one of the things that he said was the students of Jacksonville, these are our babies, all of our children, that left a lasting impression on me, their determination, their focus, their motivation to improve the health of their communities. And that's all that we are here to do, is to provide hope to the students that you work with. And thank you for allowing us to be on your campuses.
Thank you. That being said, any thoughts or questions from the board while we have them here?
I just wanna thank Bernie. I know she has a passion for education, even when she had a daycare. Try to get Michael over there. But she's always had a passion for education, and it shows through your work today. And thank you for what you do for all of our students.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts, questions? Board Member Hershey?
I love the work that you do, and I've seen it firsthand, even when I was at the Children's Commission with some of the things that you do. And I will say, I did notice that you're in District Six, and District Seven comes, six, seven comes after six. I am thinking that it's gonna cross the river, and you will find areas to expand the good work that you're doing, because I think that there is work, there are students throughout the district who could benefit.
Thank you. Invite us. Invite us. We will come.
And I will say from my standpoint, just echoing a lot of your sentiments, that the work you do is just beautiful, and we're grateful. We know we can't do it all alone, and we need partners like you. I will say that it made me smile to get to invite you. I've known you forever. You're a mentor of mine. And I'm grateful for the role you've played in my life. I will tell you, as I sat here today, I was thinking when you first started to now and just, I mean, how this program has grown. And programs don't grow unless there's need and quality. And so clearly, we've had a need, and you provided the quality. And so I just commend you the fact that you hang out with that guy, Mr. Hank. That's a new name. I've not heard Mr. Hank. But we like Mr. Hank around here as well. He's an incredible public servant and does a lot of work for the school district. So thank you to you for your service as well in both the venues that you show up in. But I just wanted to say thank you and how grateful I am. And she's already in my district, so I don't have to do that. That being said, thank you for your time this morning.
All right, thank you.
Y'all have a good day. At this time, we're gonna recess this meeting, and we're gonna go into our Agenda Committee meeting, and we'll reconvene this meeting following the Agenda Committee meeting. But as we are transitioning and giving admin a moment to do so, I believe we have the Honorable Former City Councilmember Suzanne Jenkins. Always wanna make sure, this is, I think I've recognized you twice in the last month. You've been, you've been around with us, so thank you for being with us as always.
Appreciate it.
All right. Give her one more minute. Get everybody's. All right, we are ready to get started. The School Board of the Duval County School District is now convened in its Agenda Committee meeting to review the draft agenda for the May 2nd, 2023 regular board meeting. As a show of courtesy and respect to each other, we ask that all mobile phones be turned off and that no flash photography be used during the meeting. For those wishing to address the board during our public comment portion of the Agenda Committee meeting, please note that pursuant to board policy, we expect accepted speaker cards for this meeting until the published start time for the meeting. According to the CDC's website, Duval County's COVID-19 community level is currently designated as low. The CDC currently recommends indoor mask wearing for people with symptoms, a positive test, or exposure to someone with COVID-19. Thank you for taking the time to join us and for your interest in the operation of the Duval County School District. At this time, we're gonna move into our draft agenda review for the May 2nd, 2023 Board Member, Board Meeting, sorry. I'm gonna start with Board Member Joyce, if you could give me the numbers that you would like to discuss.
Number two, ten, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-three.
Okay. Board Member Carney?
I have two and ten.
Ten. Vice Chair Pearson?
Two.
Board Member Hershey?
The ones that I'm interested in are in the polls. If questions aren't asked, I will raise my hand.
All right, Board Member Jones?
Yes, two, ten, nineteen, and twenty-four.
Nineteen, and twenty-four. So two, ten, nineteen, and twenty-four. And I have one, two, two appears to be popular, and five. All right, we will get started with item number one, which is the Schultz Center lease agreement. I actually pulled that item. I just noted that the contract is not attached yet. I know there have been a good bit of meetings in regards to that. I believe that the Schultz Center Board has some costs that they're getting ready to incur. And so we need to know that the item is going forward if they're gonna start with those costs. Can we give a confirmation that this is gonna get attached and be ready to go?
Through, through the chair, if I may. My understanding is we're trying to get a meeting together for variety, um, so that we can get this thing buttoned up.
Dr. Pearson, anything from you or no?
No, um, just, we, there are some details that we're working back and forth between regarding some particular rooms within the facility and who uses them and who's in charge of fixing them. So if it's not ready by then, we'll pull the item.
I appreciate each of you and your diligence on the item. Like I said, it's been brought to my attention that they have some costs that they have got to invest in, in terms of some facility upgrades and items, um, as a board. And that they need to make sure that they have the agreement in place before they do that. Um, so just wanna make sure that we're moving in tandem. So thank, and again, thank you to both of you for your work on that item. Okay. Um, we'll pull item number two at this point. Item number two is Amendment to the Agreement with Varsity Tutors for Schools LLC. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and start with, um, Board Member Pearson.
Thank you. As, I think I understand the finances of this one. My question is. Uh, do we have any pre-test or practice test results for the students who've been receiving the tutoring to have an idea if the tutoring has been at least moving them in practice tests?
Let me start.
Okay.
Through the chair, Board Member Pearson?
I don't have any hard data to date. We have a lot of support systems in place for these groups of students. The initial rollout plan leading up to the in-school testing this week for ACT and then SAT the following week. We do, we have received, um, we did inquire through our data chats with schools how things are going. We've received a lot of handoff and feedback, and, um, there has been some very positive responses from the students who are participating on a regular basis, as far as they feel as though it's helping them and their confidence is being built. But it's been too soon to be able to actually pull any significance in there.
I have a follow-up. So is part of the program that they do practice tests? I, I just know having actually paid for tutoring for one of my kids and remember as I studied for exams. Doing practice tests is helpful, especially when you have the book to show you what you missed and then go through why you missed it. It helps you learn, one, how to take the test, which is part of standardized testing. But also it shows you why, what you've missed and how to correct what you've missed. So that was. Are we, are we not, is, is the program not having them take practice tests before they take the in-school assessment?
So the, through the Chairboard Member Pearson, the majority of the students took an initial pre-assessment focusing on whatever assessment they're preparing for.
Okay.
To give the tutor, like, baseline data, to then build a plan for the students participating with that tutor. So the tutors are individuals working with the students one-on-one. Many of them do have them take sections of tests or parts of tests or, or whatever, but those tests or practice tests are not captured in any way, the scores from them are not. That's between the student and the tutor. Um, and to be able to monitor that, we don't have a monitoring system to capture those scores. Cause tutors, individual tutors use different available resources that they have access to. And we may not have, we don't have access to capture those data points in any way that is, um.
Uniform?
Uniform.
Okay. Uh, Board Member Jones, you had pulled aside?
Uh, yes, through the chair. Um. Do we have any data on the attendance and how, how well the students are participating in this tutoring program?
Yes, we meet with, through the Chairboard Member Jones, I meet with varsity at least weekly. We go through attendance for students who are participating, students who are not participating. Students who have earned a score actually come off, um, because there, we've been trickling, test scores always trickle in throughout the year. So we make those adjustments on a weekly basis and then follow up with the schools based on attendance. We find that some students do not participate because they're, they've earned a score and they don't need them. So it's just cleaning up rosters and making sure students are matched with the tutors. But yes, we do go through that on a weekly basis.
Do, do you have an additional outreach, outreach of students who are not participating on a regular basis?
Yes, we have, um. Uh, we've ex, with this current phase, we've expanded tutoring options to occur after school as well. So students actually can participate during the school day and after school. The vast majority are participating during the school day. Some of those students are participating during the school and after school. We have about seventy students right now participating regularly in the after-school setting. And then the additional follow-up, if for some reason they're not participating, we go with the schools. We just did this last week, uh, student by student, why is this student not participating? There's a reason, what's the reach out? Do we need to get truancy involved? Or is it because they have passed a test or for some reason doesn't fit in their schedule or whatever? So we do that on a regular basis with the schools.
All right, thank you.
All right. Um, uh, Board Member Carney?
Yes, I'm just, um, wanted to have a clarifying question. I'm looking at the difference in the third year um, versus the fourth year with the, um, um, meeting requirements. Is this because the third-year students are just starting the program, so they're showing, they're coming in at a much lower level? Cause I'm, I'm looking at the fourth-year students and it's like a major jump, which is awesome. So I just wanna make sure I had, understand the difference between the two percentages from third and fourth year.
Through the Chairboard Member Carney, those data points don't really have anything to do with varsity tutors.
Oh, okay.
Uh, varsity tutors just started, like, three weeks ago.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, that's why I was thinking like.
Uh, months ago or whatever. So what that data is representing is that you're seeing an increase in the fourth year because those students as seniors have had opportunities to take more tests and be prepared for those tests. So you're seeing the numbers decline because of the support systems in place and the multiple testing opportunities.
Got it, thank you. So sometimes they're a little more incentivized their senior year to actually.
Yeah, the light, the light goes on.
I, I, I might have noticed that at one point.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you, Carrie.
All right, Board Member Joyce?
Um, so I'd like to begin by just, um, following up with the quest, the question that our Board Member Jones asked. And I would like the numbers for how many students are geared? Like, how many students are participating, not just participating like we are, asking them to participate? And then how many students are actually participating? So I kinda wanna see the, the difference in those numbers. Um, and, does that make sense? Yeah.
How many were invited?
Yes.
Versus how many actually take it down?
I would like those numbers. Do we have those off the top of our head?
I don't.
You would.
Do not.
It's approximately thirteen hundred. Those numbers, though, have fluctuated as scores have come in from the initial rostering. So while we may have invited, uh, roughly fifteen hundred students, right? Since then, scores have come in, so less students need to participate. So that's always a moving target, but I can put together something that makes sense.
Okay, and just to clarify, students who haven't met the target? How many of those are participating or are not participating? So they haven't met their target yet? Cause I don't know, we're doing some of that testing today, so.
Correct, they're just in school today, so.
Yes.
Um, I don't have that off the top, I have that something that I can pull from the list and provide.
Perfect. So I would like those numbers. Um, and then when we look at the ARPESR supplement tool programming grant. What other, um, opportunities do we have to utilize these funds outside of just varsity? Um, do we, but, and I guess what I'm asking is, can these funds be utilized at the elementary school level? Can they be utilized at the middle school level? Um, when, what other ways can we utilize these funds? And I say that because, you know, we approved a million dollars, I believe, the last time. We're amending it to almost double that. I just wanna make sure that, you know, we, we know that we have struggling students. We know that we you know, we don't, we don't have children reading on very level. And so just kinda seeing what other opportunities do we have for utilizing these funds outside of just varsity.
Sure. Through the Chairboard Member Joyce, the exact amounts of those complete grants I'll have to get with, uh, Hall of Fame for a while? Okay.
So that, that grant is approximately seven million dollars, minus the charter share. Ours is about six point five million dollars, and some of it is allocated for, um, reading tutoring for elementary. And some is for middle school, and then some is for the high school. So it is allocated in two different. And it, and it had to start October twenty twenty-two, and it has to be expended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. So it, there is elementary, middle, and high school tutoring included in that grant application.
Okay, so there is, um, is there specific amounts designated for each? Um, gr, you know, elementary, middle, and high?
The, the grant was written as one solid pocket for one-on-one tutoring. And the grant was very specific in that it had to be spent on one-to-one tutoring. They amended the grant to allow that to happen during the school day because initially it was all after school. And that's why you're saying some amendments, um, so that we can put that tutoring into, into those grants. But it was written as one pocket, but we do have different tutoring underneath that in our budget.
Okay. Um, yeah, I would like to see the numbers, number one. And then projected, you know, if we're gonna spend this and we're gonna, I guess, uh, the amendment would really be utilized for juniors, better juniors now that haven't met their graduation requirement. So, you know, we would do this or, or don't be seniors next year, I guess. Um, seeing, you know, just financially, what's most advantageous for our board in utilizing these funds? I know it's ESR, we kinda see that as free money, but I just really do wanna make sure that, you know, we don't have data. We don't have the statistics on, you know, if it's just working, is it not? You know, we have, there are graders that aren't reading on grade level. Just making sure that we're utilizing this in the best, most fiscally responsible way. Yes, I think that's all. Um.
All right, um, and I, I did pull this item also. My question is more, um, of round, and I've asked this before with other one-to-one tutoring. Um, have they had any issues with hiring of employees? Do they have enough staff to be able to provide the services in the district as large as ours?
Yes, through the, or.
Chair to the chair.
Um.
Through the chair, too.
Yes. Uh, initially our, that we ran, we have run into some difficulty with identifying enough tutors. Um, which resulted in some students being grouped. So students were placed in smaller groups to be able to allow for services to everyone. A big reason as to why the number of tutors were not available is because we forced the tutoring into an alternating A B schedule to fit our schedule. So moving forward in the next phase, as we finish up, um, this week. We are taking a break, resetting based off of students who, seniors who still need a concordant score and are signed up for the June tenth and the July fifteenth ACT. That's the priority for the next round. We are also going to include juniors in that group who are signed up for those assessments to help prepare for the, the ACT only, focusing just on that one assessment. And eliminating that rotating schedule piece, so that students will be pulled out potentially of two different classes and then roll into the summer, um, leading up to those classes. So, um, varsity has, they've been fine, they, I mean, they've been transparent and, and in the beginning, they said, yes, we have plenty of tutors. But once they got into it on that rotating schedule, it created barriers because tutors typically you'll set a schedule that is Tuesdays and Thursdays, right? So when you throw in Tuesdays, Thursdays, Mondays, Wednesdays, and next week, it caused some issues. So we're gonna eliminate that for it to increase the number of tutors to allow for more specific one-to-one.
I appreciate that. Like I said, there are just so many groups now doing one-to-one across the country. And so at some point, there are only so many retired teachers out there. Um, and so anyway. Um, my other is a data point and it'll be a bring back. Um, what I'd like is for the cohort, um, from prior to the pandemic that we're using kind of as our baseline right now for graduation, because we're keeping the pandemic cohorts out. Um, and the current cohort, um, to do as of right now, um, using current standards, graduation standards, the new ones versus the old ones. Um, where was the cohort prior to, um, the pandemic in terms of, um, percent of ready, grad ready? Um, versus where are we now? Just looking to see, are we dovetailing with them? And, and looking at it from old sta, both cohorts from old standards, new, new standards as well, so we can see both vantage points. And can I have that broken down for full district, district traditional, district charter? Um, and then also school by school, um, because I do wanna make sure we're looking at what, what are projections looking like at the school level? Because I think we're gonna see the real disparities, um, with the new ones. So that the board is really seeing, if this new piece happens, what is it looking like right now? And what would it have looked like with the other cohort as well, the last true cohort? Um, just to have both vantage points, so. Just when you get a chance on that.
Eighteen grad, yes, graduating class week.
Yeah, it's eighteen, nineteen. Um, all right, I appreciate you.
Do you wanna include last year's graduating class? Cause I still have tests also.
You can. I just, I was in fairness to district comparison, I was trying to. But you can. Yeah, you can. And if you get into it and wanna tell the story a little differently, I'm just trying to get a real understanding of where this co, is this cohort gonna act similarly to prior? And so could we expect them to end up in the same spot? Let's see, I pulled item, uh, moving to item number five. Um, I actually pulled this one. Um, approval of one-time bonus for school-based administrators, um, just, uh, to Dr. Green. Um, explaining to the public, uh, where this money is coming from and what it is, but also just verifying. I know in the past, there have been times that certain groups have been left out. Um, are we confident that everybody, I know at times there were counselors left out of one or whatever. Is everybody being included? Are we good on that note? You made sure we were covered on everybody when bonuses like this have come about in the past. You made sure all employee groups were, were covered, so I just wanted to touch base on that. So that we don't get emails on the backside as a board, we were left out or anything like that.
Through the chair, through the chair, yes, they are all covered, the groups. This is the last.
Okay.
Bonus under ESR. Don't blame anybody.
So we should be done at this point?
Yep. Yes, so it's, we're all school-based.
All right, so should, we shouldn't expect anything. And again, you did a great job of making sure we covered everybody, so just making sure we wouldn't get anything strange on the backside on this one. Um, item number ten, uh, school district five-year capital plan. I'll start with Board Member Joyce.
Thank you. Um, I pulled it, um, because the amount was so significant. So through the chair to Dr. Green, um, we're taking seven million dollars away from the West Side middle school renovation and moving it to the Highlands Elementary School. What will that mean for West Side, uh, middle school?
Through the Chairboard Member Joyce? It technically doesn't mean anything because what we're doing is, West Side Middle School renovation isn't until, I'm sorry, I don't have that date in my head, but Mr. Soros will share it with you. Um, but this, this cost. Okay.
Mr. Soros?
Um, when the cops bond was set up, cops relies on the new school as collateral. So thirteen schools were selected, designs were completed to a fire percent point, and they were submitted as the funding source. So there's thirteen projects were funded. When we do, there's a separate list in the master facility plan for Pega, another eighty-seven million dollars. West Side is fully funded in that. Another eighty-seven million dollars. West Side is fully funded in that Pago list, fully funded sixteen point seven nine. As Dr. Green was saying, there's no impact, there is no impact. The funding shown on the COPS list for West Side is simply a placeholder. Because all money has to be set aside against a project for purposes of finance or for CFO. So that money you see in West Side will eventually complete to a pretty low number as other pro-, other projects come in. Unless we have a turn and we see costs go down, the cost for West Side is fully funded on the master facility plan, Pago list. And it will not be impacted by this change. So it's a little different than my thought, but that's, that's how it's set up. In i- in in the, in the five-year capital plan. The West Side funding is really a placeholder. Uh as we go through and execute the other twelve projects, if in fact we don't need it, then that funding will eventually be shifted to a, to a phase two or another, another project.
Yeah, um it is makes, makes sense, I guess, but it makes me nervous when you're moving so much money away from a project. And I will say that in the last couple of um community meetings that Mr. Jones and I have attended. With this restructuring and the the um re- the boundary i- issues with Chappy Trail. That um part of the conversation has been that the Charger Academy. Community really wanted maybe to stay near their homes. In their community and that they were questioning why West Side Middle School wasn't an option for. For them and that they, they were concerned about busing their children from, you know, where they live. Is so much further to get to Chappy Trail um than going to West Side Middle. And I think there was some conversation around land, there's a lot of land at West Side Middle that we're not utilizing. Um and I just felt like this was an opportunity to bring that to the board, that these were some discussions that had been had. Um and just with the transportation costs that we just uh presentation that we just received. You know, we've always been told that this is a flexible plan and that we will look at it and we can adapt and change the master facility plan. You know, as our circumstances change. And you know, I just wanted to bring that conversation to the board, that these are things that community is asking for. Board Member Jones might, you know, have something to add or not, um but you know, at the end of the day, when we look at long-term cost. Transportation and all of that, would it be, you know, to our advantage, still at least have a conversation about. Expanding West Side Middle really to meet the needs of the community. Um that's.
Um Vice Chair, I mean, uh uh Peterson didn't, uh Board Member Carney, you had pulled this item.
Remember Joyce has covered my question.
Okay.
So I am good.
Um Board Member Jones.
Thank you. Um I now understand why the, why this being, this action, that item is here. Because it's placeholder and that's, that was my concern too, were we depleting the funds for West Side? Uh when the community needs those improvements in order to transfer the students from Charger Academy. To uh West Side, so uh we will to Board Member Joyce's point, we will have a meeting with the community. So that we can kind of flush out some of their concerns and hear from them, but we haven't heard from them on that particular issue. Uh we did have several ACE meetings and we uh. It, they were kind of logging heads on what to do and I told uh Mr. Soros, it's best if we have a meeting with the parents. And Dr. Nixon, I think, chairs the uh ACE committee and so we will do that meeting. So waiting for a full recovery from our esteemed superintendent before we schedule that meeting with the parents. Thank you.
And will that meeting be open? I guess it will be publicly, but it's said that we can all, all of our participate.
Yeah. Um all right, moving to seventeen, first amendment to the design services professional consultant contract new six eight. Chappy Trail Middle School, R F Q number zero one dash two two T W dash project number P E dash nine one six eight O. And I'm gonna start with, actually, um Board Member Joyce, you already all wonderful item, so we'll go to you.
All right, I do the chair to Dr. Green, just wanting to um understand what the amendment's for, um is why this is happening.
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, since Mr. Soros was so kindly to. What I was gonna explain, which was gonna be the same thing, I'll let him take it.
Um to the, through the uh, through the chair of Board Member Joyce, this is really for additional design services. So in that, at that site, you know, we had Go for tortures, we had a number of issues. One of them was also a lot of soil contamination. That site used to be a training range for me. So so there is like dumb um organs we found, we had to bring in, it had uh. Um original at McIndian, we had to bring a certain check on that. And we had contaminated soil, which is the main cause. We had to do a lot of additional testing of the soil, which goes through the A and E contract to testing services. And so they perform that work, as you can see, the project's moving. Uh and this is to pay them for that additional design work in the soil testing.
Okay, thank you, just curious.
I am happy to report that at the ground breaking the other day, I got to talk to the Go for relocation team. They were there as well and they were delightful to talk with and we had a wonderful um uh chat.
I think I put a lot of the soil on my shoes.
There you go, you did. And Board Member Hershey got a lot of that soil on um Hershey's as well, so anyway, but great event, um so anyway. Um but I think that the the tortoises will live in infamy on this board. Um item number eighteen, phase three construction documents, approval for new astroturf field project at Inglewood High School. Number ninety, project C nine one four four zero. Um Board Member Joyce.
My the only one.
Yes.
Um through the chair to Dr. Green, um just. Wanting to understand the process as far as when did Inglewood? Was there, were there any conversation with the, you know, athletic director, the coaches? And everyone about the um moving the, the field from a- from astroturf? I mean, from grass to astroturf. I know there's been some, in my world, some conversations, some concern about it. Uh Riverside High, everybody was on board with it. It wasn't much needed because this is the only piece of. This is the only place that, you know, has soccer and, you know, so many different um different sporting events. And kind of just, I know this is not my school, but I'm curious as to. How does the Inglewood utilize this and what their conversation, what people brought in to say, yes, we definitely want astroturf here? Or, you know, we really would prefer grass, just kind of wanting to understand that.
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, Ms. Tammy Tally um is the person who's been meeting with all the athletic directors. Uh so I can't say what conversations, but this came from the recommendation from athletics that Inglewood be the next.
Okay, all right.
Vice Chair Pearson, I'm guessing you're close to the issue.
Having had the conversation with the principal, yes, they're excited about it. Um I have been to football games at Inglewood, I have been to soccer at Inglewood. For sure, those are the two things I've been to that field. It needs help. Um and I, I believe they're excited about it. After the last meeting, um because as the mom of a soccer player. Um I'm not a hundred percent sure con- or convinced that we need to change all of our fields. I, I would say, I would vote for a mixture of of grass and synthetic in the district um for a number of reasons. But um so I reached out to my principals at my remaining two schools and asked them what they wanted. And I would say any of us could do the same, um if you haven't already done that. Um one principal said, yes, definitely, can you move me up on the list? And, and I said, no. Um and uh the other principal um asked about maintenance. Who was responsible for the ma-, or would there be money in the budget for maintenance of the field? Or who would be responsible for the maintenance cost of the field, which I need to forward that question on. So um as far as District Three goes, those schools are covered.
Through the uh, for chair, I do, I do want to just, again, this, this Pearson, Board Member Pearson said is exactly right. It's a, we have a lot of conversation with the principal, they're very excited, as you know, or you hopefully you know, that their locker room was just redone not too long ago. Thanks to, to the Jacksonville Jaguars, um players that that came in, that that was there as well as an alumni. But so it goes, it goes hand in hand with what they're trying to do there to continue to get, because they, they're losing their football coach again, unfortunately. Every time they get it good, when they lose one. So this helps them with recruiting a new coach. Um that will hopefully stay for a while and then also getting some athletes to, to, you know, not that we recruit athletes. But for academic scholars to come, but also with the intent to, to play sports, so they're very excited about, about it.
They had a good season.
It, I know.
I, I didn't know that the coach was leaving, I'm sorry for them.
Well, that's exciting.
Good, thank you.
Yeah. All right. Oh, sure, Board Member Jones.
With, with this me, does this mean if we improve it next month, will the field be ready for this coming football season or would they have to wait?
Soros.
Through the chair to Board Member Jones, we're, the plan is having ready this August. So that's why, you know, we were, we said it last month, you know, when, when the cost of like ninety-sixteen, we're trying to do everything as quickly as we can to make August. That's, that's, that's exciting.
Mr. Soros, I, I believe you have a background in playing football at some point in your life. If they haven't found a coach by then, could you step in and help with that as well? You could make the field happen and coach the team, I'm just saying. How many talents do you have for this district, Mr. Soros?
We couldn't afford it.
We couldn't afford him. Um his contract would be too much. Um all right, we'll move on to item number nineteen, which is amendment to the custodial services management contract, R F P number thirteen dash twenty-one. Uh T W, I'll start with Board Member Jones, you pulled this item.
Oh, thank you, to the chair, Dr. Green. Uh certainly, this is needed. Uh we look at the cost, I guess my overall concern is uh. Will this contractor pay his, pay their employees uh health benefits and retirement? Because I know a lot of companies will come in and provide the service, but then the taxpayers in general, not the district. But the taxpayers in general, when that person gets sick, we have to, they end up a chance in energy care program. Where we, taxpayers pay for that. If they retire, they'll have retirement and uh they go on some type of. Public assistance. I'm just curious as to whether this company is providing, because we wanna compare apples with apples. Uh whether this company is uh providing uh health care and retirement for their employees.
Through the chair to Board Member Jones, they, the pay is significantly higher for starters. They do have benefits, um which we have probably over eight hundred custodians already under, on a custodial contract. So um they do pay health benefits, they do pay other benefits. Um I can't say off the top of my head if they're exactly equal to what we pay, but we do pay benefits. If Ms. Schultz has any other input on the, what they pay, because I know they've looked at this more closely.
Ms. Schultz?
Um through the chair, it is comparable, we looked at it about a year ago, it's not an exact match, but it, it is comparable.
So they provide both healthcare and retirement. I just know that the city of Jacksonville sends about thirty million dollars to get up health every year. Because we have so many people who don't have insurance. And when we provide contracted services to companies, they come in and lowball it because they don't pay those services. Then we as taxpayers pick up that cost.
And actually, the amount that they send to U F doesn't usually cover the actual cost, it, it doesn't come close if you, yeah. Um all right, Board Member Joyce, you had also pulled this one.
Um yes, in the description, um it indicates that I B W has apparently demanded. That all employees, I B W employees' wages must be raised. So if we're gonna raise uh wages for one group, then we would need to raise them across the board. My question is, through the chair to Dr. Green, do they want all of the wage increases to be equal? As far as whether it's someone who mows the lawn or someone who is an electrician, licensed electrician, licensed plumber? Or are they differentiating the skill set when they're asking for this?
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, um it's basically across the board. And I really can't talk about what they, because they, we have rules and bargaining, so I can't say that that's. But in the past, it basically wants to raise every individual in their bargaining unit at the, at the same level.
All right, moving to item number twenty-three, nonprofit school food service, food service management company, um R F P number twenty-one dash twenty-three T W. Uh Board Member Joyce.
So through the chair to Dr. Green, I wanna start off by saying that um Charwell's does indeed uh um I toured it. I have um taken my kids on a field trip there, they love seeing where their food comes from, you know. But um my only concern was, this is the only proposal received. So just wanting to understand why and is it part of the R F P? And what conversations went around, oh, um went with this. Because I think when we, as a, you know, the community might look at this and say, that's a problem if we only receive one proposal. Um so can you, just wanted to speak to that.
So through the chair to Board Member Joyce, I'll start and all you can raise your hand when you wanna jump in. Um I think we sent you a sort of explanation several months ago about. Um that they weren't no, no longer going to be able to function in the current um current environment. That they were losing funding and it was like four, they were gonna be four million dollars under. So we were, we had to put out an R F P. Most times when you do an R F P, especially for large contracts like this, you're looking a year out. Just like when we do transportation, it's not for the upcoming year, it's for the next year. We don't have the luxury to say, oh, we just won't have food service for a year. We, it was for the next um upcoming school year. And so I, I can only surmise that many contractors didn't apply because of how quickly the turnaround needed to be on this R F P. But it was put out by the le-, what we're supposed to do legally, it was posted for the amount of days. But um Charwell's is the only one to apply. Mr. Soros, if there's anything you'd like to add to that.
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, at the time the R F P went out and at the time Charwell submitted a proposal, they had no idea they were gonna be the only one. So that creates a competitive environment, so this is a competitive price. It would be nice to have more proposals to choose from, but they had, they didn't know they were gonna be the only one, nobody does. So this is a competitive price based on that. We did a two-hour negotiation yesterday with their CEO. Hope to get a final offer from them today and have to wrap it up by the end of this week, so we expect this cost to come down also. Also, we're still, we're still driving that to see what we can do. But as far as, it, it was effectively competitive because there's no way to know that it wasn't gonna be at the time the proposals were submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Soros. Um we will move to item number twenty-four, public hearing revoked, revisions, chapter four, board policies. Board Member Jones, you had pulled that item.
Uh yes, uh through the chair to Dr. Green, can you uh just briefly recap how we notify parents? When a student is not gonna meet the requirements for graduation?
Through the chair to Board Member Jones, the schools notify parents a number of ways. Um many of them do have counselors doing, especially the senior counselor, uh making personal phone calls. Uh sending uh, I mean, they can send information through the parent portal. Um but they individualize it, it's not like a robo-call going out. And we're done to get, robo-call is from me that says, you still need to take an assessment. Because at this time, you were, you have not met graduation requirements, but it is a very individualized. But it's mostly done through the counselors, uh letting those parents know. Your student is in danger of not graduating.
And with this change, I know a lot of students assume they can walk even though they, they haven't met all the requirements. With this change, that'd be effective this school year?
Yes, sir. Oh, oh, sorry, it's not this year, next year?
Next year, okay, so we have to, all right, just wanna make sure it's parents.
I will say principals have been letting parents know.
Yeah.
That you need to participate in every opportunity that we are providing for, to help. Cause the number one issue is of getting our concordance score. We can work with GDA, we can work with, oh, you, you're missing your online course, which hopefully that, I don't know if that's passed or not, but that, that will no longer be, uh, a requirement.
It was, it's needed, cause several principals have mentioned to me that once they walk, that there was no incentive for them to complete their, um, requirements, so. This hopefully will incentivize them to complete and get that high school diploma.
Yeah, and I know at board policy meeting, we talked about the fact that there is a reality that the seniors, when they come back for second semester, there is a meeting that's held that's required by board policy to outline what you have to do and not do in order to participate or not participate. And since that meeting had already been held this year, this board policy would not have been, they would not have covered it, it wasn't fair, because it would be, you know, false advertisement to the current seniors. We had already had that meeting with them, so they'll stay with the existing policy as we go into effect for next years, uh, cause we didn't wanna change the rules on them midstream, so. Um, all right, we are now on the public comment portion of our agenda. The school board welcomes your comments on matters that are before the board for consideration. It is not the board's intent to respond, but to use the input in our deliberations to give everyone appropriate respect and courtesy. We ask the audience to refrain from audible comments or applause. Um, uh, when you come to the microphone, actually. No, that's not, okay. Yeah, well, let's get that one, it had to be filled out before the beginning of the meeting, but you are always welcome to leave comments, uh, with counsel, um, and they will distribute them to us, so you can email him anything you would like. Um, board policy is that you have to submit a sticker card before the meeting starts, but we're always glad to have you with us again. Um, all right, at this time, um, uh, that the Duval's, uh, we're gonna move out of agenda committee meeting, um, that the Duval County School Board moved to adjourn the agenda committee meeting, do I have a motion?
Seven.
All right, I have a motion by Vice Chair Pearson and, um, a second by, uh, Board Member Jones. Um, alders in favor, signal by saying yay. Um, and that vote passes unanimously, we're six zero. Um, and at this point, I'm gonna give you time to switch over to the board workshop. Y'all came in at a tie, I always feel like, um, it's funny sometimes when you're sitting here, you're like, wait a second, which one was first? Anyway. Thank you for participating, making it easy. All right, at this time, we're gonna, um, uh, move into our workshop portion of the meeting. Um, we're gonna reconvene the, the board workshop that started earlier today. Um, our topics for discussion today are budget update, ESER, um, Douglas Anderson School of the Arts investigation update by legal counsel and governance. As to setting the stage on the bus, budget update, ESER, this was something that actually, um, uh, Board Member Joyce and I leaned into in a December board meeting. Um, and so we have been working with Dr. Green to give this presentation, um, in regards to the ESER dollars and, and whatnot, uh, to us. So we appreciate that that's coming, if you're watching, um, nationally, all districts are dealing with this, we're not the only one. Um, I will say I reviewed the item last night, um, there is a slide called engaging the community, that's kind of the midpoint. If you have an urgent question, certainly we can stop if there is, but if not, that might be our natural breaking point to stop for questions, just for time efficiency purposes. Um, with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Green, who looks like she has a friend in vote.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, we're, we're turning it over to Ms. Staley, our CFO.
All right.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
Generally, we bring this type of budget overview to the next year after the legislative session. Um, because it's an, it's an odd year, uh, the legislative session doesn't start till later. If you remember last year, we probably brought you this presentation around the same time, but the legislative session had already ended. And so a lot of the information that I'll be bringing you today is what's available now, just to kind of give the board a little bit of an overview of what we've been hearing, um, through our different sources regarding the budget. You know, there's a lot of things going on right now with the House and the Senate budget and that type of thing. So we just wanted to bring you some preliminary information, just to kind of, so you will be prepared for when we do our regular budget presentation uh, in a few months, when the session is over. You all have probably seen this slide before, uh, we're gonna decline some of this line, we need to you, cause you weren't here last year, so ask away. And so, as you know, the majority of our funding comes between two sources, um, FFP programs through the state and also through our property taxes. And so I wanted to provide a history of where we are based from two years ago, from twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, where we are with the forecast that we did in February, where it is with the House budget, where it is with the Senate budget. And we're gonna spend a little bit of time talking about this, because you, you may be hearing a lot of things coming out of Tallahassee regarding our budget, and there's a lot of information, so I tried to make it as concise as possible. But where we are right now, this year, if you go down to the third line, um, our weighted FTEs, just under a hundred and thirty-six thousand students. Um, keep in mind, our numbers up to this point include both charter schools and their scholarship programs. I have a slide next, I'll break it down into the different categories. Um, if you will look at the next line, it talks about the forecast of one thirty-nine, oh, one eight. One thing to keep in mind that's really important about that number is that that forecast does not take into consideration any impact for, um, Senate Bill One right now. The discussion in Tallahassee right now is that the Senate and the House are about forty thousand FTE apart in their budgets, they have not settled. When they do come to an agreement, we've been told that our forecast will be recast, re-estimated based on whatever happens between the House and the Senate. So right now, our forecast is at one thirty-nine, like I said, that includes both charter and scholarship programs. If you look down below, this is what the House current proposed has, is one forty. That does include the family empowerment, and if you look at the Senate budget, I have documents if you're interested in that, that excludes family empowerment. And so it, it's really difficult when you start trying to compare numbers between their proposed budgets, cause it's like apples to oranges, and including this year, I'm gonna say peaches, I mean, it's three different, it is three cum-cloths, whatever fruit you wanna use as a third one. And so that's important to keep in mind, you may be speaking to people from Tallahassee in legislative session, but there's nothing that's finalized right now. So this is all coming from Tallahassee, FADs, FSBA, that type of thing. They've, they've given us a lot of information, but that is one really important thing to keep in mind, that that one thirty-nine may not be what we end up, uh, when we get our final budget. And so. So on this next slide, this is a breakdown of where we are in different areas. Um, traditional, family empowerment, McKay, charter, and Du, I combined Duval and DJJ since they were so small. Um, one of the things to note is that this current year is the first year they combined both McKay and family empowerment. So if you see our numbers, just keep in mind that there's about two, two to, two thousand, twenty-five hundred students, I'd have to pull the latest numbers of who is, what is considered that type of student. And so that is what the big increase is in the family empowerment number. That number for next year is, it'll be closer to eleven thousand, however, as I said before, that was before the bill passed. So that number could be significantly higher, and it also depends on if they decide, however they agree, uh, whether to include it into the funding formula or not. So there's a, like I said, there's a lot of moving parts. And so as you will see, that we've had a reduction just in tr, in the traditional, um, which I'm sure you are probably somewhat aware. A lot of the FTE went towards family empowerment, you can see the growth in charter schools. Um, so that is where we are right now, as far as our FTE. And so just so you all know, just as a note, the family empowerment scholarship began in the nineteen twenty year. You can see the growth, um, that very first year, that twelve hundred students was about just under seven million dollars. And this year, the ninety-five hundred students, that's about eighty-seven million. And so we've gone from just under seven to eighty-seven million, um, for family empowerment. That's, that's where we are, that's where a lot of the growth has happened as far as FTE. Um, and also, like I said, McKay was combined this year, so. This, I wanted to provide this information and just talk about it a little bit, because as you know, a lot of people focus on the base student allocation for students, they have a lot of categoricals, but this is really the big piece of the base student allocation. So as you will see where we were in eighteen nineteen, and I take it all the way to this year, I've included the House information, also the Senate information. And so I'm just gonna walk you through a little bit, so that very top number, that is the base student allocation amount that all school districts receive, is the same amount of money. What differentiates it is that third line that is called the comparable wage factor, it used to be called the district cost differential. What that is, is there's a formula, it's part of the funding, where they take the average salary information for each county, and they provide a factor to multiply that base student allocation. Generally, in Duval County, ours has always been above one, is, yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna stop you for a second, I'm gonna ask you actually to use a little bit louder voice, we've got some people that are watching online right now, and they're having a hard time hearing you, so I'm gonna tell you, use your middle school principal voice, that's what I would use, but, um, use your, you, use your J-Mat, um, raining the boys in voice, if you wanna use that one.
Oh, that one, okay.
But we do have people that are watching online that are letting me know they're having a little trouble.
Okay, well, I'll, 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 I'll speak louder, I hope I don't, I feel like I'm yelling, but.
No, you're good, you're good, we're ready. Before you're yelling. We're good, long way to go.
All right, well, so let me just say that, that, that factor, every school district is assigned a factor. It is determined by Tallahassee, and so as you will see on that third line, we multiply that third line factor against the base student allocation, and so that allows us to receive a little bit more. But if that factor changes, that impacts what we receive every single year. And so the bottom line, where it says base funding per FTE, that is really what we are receiving in Duval County, um, for every weighted FTE. And so as you get closer over here, where you'll see the twenty-two, twenty-three year, that's this year, there's a large increase of two fourteen, forty-two. But as we may have discussed in prior budget discussions, a lot of that money relates to both charter schools and family empowerment. A lot of that increase did not go to the district. In fact, most of the funding for twenty-two, twenty-three from the district was pretty flat, pretty flat. And so I have put side by side the Senate and the House, this is based on what we, what we've been provided, um, probably the last week of March, that's what it was. And so if you look at the twenty-two, twenty-three year and compare it to just the Senate, so the Senate excludes, I'm gonna try not to get, I'll get it backwards, excludes the, um, yes, the Senate excludes the family empowerment. And so one thing to keep in mind is the twenty-two, twenty-three includes it. And that's why, I just want you to be very cognizant of the fact that there are different things, and things may not, they may look comparable, but they're not comparable. And so if you look at the Senate, their increase in the base student allocation overall at the bottom is thirteen dollars and three cents. Now, the Sen, the House version has a seven hundred and seventy-two dollars, sixty-six cent increase. However, they have rolled up a number of categorical, um, funding sources, they've rolled up a lot of them into that number. And so I attempted to do a calculation where I could even it out, kind of taking things out of the House, the Senate this year, just to make it even, so it would be a comparable, um, comparison. FADs also did the same thing, when they did the comparison between the Senate and the House, trying to factor out the differences, there's only about a six point five million dollar difference in base funding between the House and the Sen, even though it looks on the surface that there's a large increase. So there's about a six point five million dollar difference, and then when I try to compare it to this year, the numbers are all around the same. So there's not a huge difference between what we're generating now, comparing it to the Senate, factoring out the things that are different, and also the same thing with the House budget. And so there's gonna be a lot of numbers coming out of Tallahassee, but when you actually look at the numbers, there's not a huge difference between what we're generating now and what we're generating between the House and the Senate. It's all probably between six and twelve million dollars difference, between the three columns that I'm looking at. So, so like I said, you're gonna hear a lot of numbers, you can call me and ask questions, I'll be glad to answer it. But that's what I wanted to emphasize today, is that in looking at the preliminary information between this year, Senate and House, we're basically getting the same funding, so. And as part of the information, as part of the information that we received also, we've received preliminary information on the certified or the property values where our milage rates will be generated. And so this current year, our property value is around ninety-nine billion dollars for the county. You take ninety-six percent of it, and that's what you apply the milage rates to. So on the twenty-three, twenty-four information, right now, the estimate is about a hundred and thirteen billion. So there is an increase. Now generally in the past, if the value, property values go up, the required local effort rate generally goes down. But in this case, when I calculate it, there's a slight increase of about point zero two in the required local effort. That may change, that is just based on preliminary information. I won't receive that official information, the certified property. I won't receive that official information, the certified property values. I received that from the City of Jacksonville Property Frasier's office, usually in the June-July time period. And so I wanted to provide this information, just so you would be thinking about where our budget might be. If there's a prior period adjustment, Department of Education will let me know if I have to levy that. The discretionary operating, the zero point seven four eight, it has been that rate for a very long time. It is established in the General Appropriations Act. So I have to wait till it comes out, but it has been that rate for a very long time. I have not heard anything yet that it would change. And then the capital outlay, one point five mils, that's in the statutes. That's in ten eleven. So unless they amend that statute, that should stay the same also. And so because our property values are estimated to be higher, the rate is a little bit higher. Part of our monies that we receive from Tallahassee in the FEFP program, it takes into consideration how much money we generate. And so that is a part of, you might hear a number of, we're providing eight thousand and something for FTE. Part of it is made up of these property taxes. And so I believe I sent the board a few weeks ago, a summary. And on the bottom, I had put down this much is from state, this much is from local. If you wanna revisit that, I used this information to provide you that on the bottom of that spreadsheet. And if you wanna revisit that in light of this information, that will give you some insight as to how, where all the money will be coming. Okay. So we can't talk about budget, right, without talking about ESAR. We have a lot of questions about the ESAR funding. And so we did, I did, I'm not gonna read it word for word. But these are the different areas that we wanna classify how we spent the ESAR funding. Most of you may be aware, bonuses and supplements, COVID-related items, school resources, curriculum, technology, and staffing. And so this is just an update where we are, um, on the ESAR funding. We have three rounds of ESAR funding. Um, the first one came right after COVID hit in June, and that fund closed out this past September. So there are no more funds to be expended. You will see in the next couple of slides, there are, there is a residual. And those will be for charter and private, who did not spend their money. But these are the three rounds. There's round one, there's round two, and round three. And as you can see, there are, there's two will be coming up in September where it'll close out. Three will close out next year. And so this will show you. So this is a nice summary of what we're allowed to use the funding for. We were required to reserve at least twenty percent to address learning loss. And then the remaining eighty percent could be used on these different initiatives. And, um, as you will see, there are different areas that we've got covered all this.
I'm gonna pause here. Any questions at this point? This was one of the breaking points. Any questions? Board Member Jones.
I'm gonna thank you to the Chair, the ESAR funding that remains after the deadline. What happens is that they, we spent all our, our, all this stuff, yeah, other funds that were allocated for charter schools.
So through the Chair, the Board Member.
Can we, can we co-opt that money?
That would be nice. However, where the deadline has passed, it's September twenty-twenty-two. Basically, the grant is closed. So we're no longer, um, allowed, or we have the ability to draw down any monies to reimburse ourselves out of that particular source of funding. And so that's closed. We've done a final report on it. And so anything else related to ESAR-type expenditure would have to be coming out of either the second round or the third round. So even though there are funds, so to speak, left over, uh, we, we could have done it prior to the closeout, but we left it open for them, charters and private, up until the end to give them opportunities to submit whatever reimbursements they wanted out of that funding. But now it's closed.
Thank you.
We write a check back to, how does that work?
Well, the way the, all three rounds are, work the same. They're, they're, they're called, they're reimbursement grants. So basically, we spend the money first, and then we request a cash drawdown. So there's no funding.
It's not like we got the initial and then.
So they provide us an award letter, so we know how much to budget, what our spending authority is. We, we, we basically front the money to spend on the expenditures, and then we request the, the drawdown from the Florida Department of Education.
Yes. Um, I'm, I have the understanding that when it comes to the base student, um, allocation, that even though, over the past years, we've seen a quote-unquote increase in that, have we still, how far away are we from the base student allocation from two thousand and eight as compared to now?
Usually have a chart on that, and I know why you're asking, because you know I have it at chart. I'd have to bring the chart. I want to say, we haven't gotten back to that yet, but let me, let me.
That was, and that's the point that I think we need to understand as a board, is that while dollars have increased over the years, we have never gotten back to our base student allocation of where we were in two thousand and eight. And, um, so I think that that's significant. And the other question is, is that are we seeing increases? I'm, I'm trying to understand how our base allocation is less than where it was in two thousand and eight. And is that because we're spending monies, uh, for other voucher programs? Or is the money being, um, you know, being used as categorical? Or is it just truly that the base allocation is still at a deficit as compared to, from two thousand and eight?
So through the Chair to Board Member Hershey, so I will send, I'll provide that chart because I have a chart that does go back to this two thousand and eight year. There is a certain, you see it going up, and then it goes down, and then it goes back up, but it never fully goes back to the level that we have been, had in the past. When, when the legislature gets together to determine base student allocation, it could be a year, and I'd have to look at the year, there could be a new categorical, there could be a new program. There could be, there's all kinds of, because the FEFP funding formula is very, I don't know if you've seen it. You've probably gone to the training at FSBA, uh, in Howie and the Hills, and they, and they provide you the formula, and they'll put it up on the screen. And it looks very clean and simple with these pretty boxes. But then when you start digging into it, it, it's very complicated. Um, so I, let me look for you, because depending on the year, it could be a year where there was something new that year as to why they decided to shift it, just like here with the House version. Now they're wanting to shift things up to the base student allocation. And they are really categorical things that they're shifting up there. So the funding didn't go away necessarily, but it's just not a separate line item, like reading and that type of thing. Instructional materials, that's part of what's been, that's been shifted up.
Okay. Thank you. Board Member Joyce.
When we look at the ESAR allowable uses, I'm interested in the three buckets, ESAR one, ESAR two, and ESAR three. Um, I would like, um, when we go, when we look at ESAR funding for ESAR one, we're done, it's closed out. And you have the allowable uses. Is it possible that you could provide the board with the money we received? And then when you look at the allowable uses, what percentage of that funding will, do we use for each of these categories? Just break that down. High level.
I could do a very simple chart, where it would be, do you just want, you want it for all three rounds or just ESAR one?
Um, I'd like to see it for all three, what, you know, what, what percentage of that money did we spend on coordinating preparedness and response efforts? What percentage do we spend on technology and that piece? So breaking it down. And then for ESAR three, the board can understand and know where we're projected to go with that, those funding, you know, with that funding, what we're budgeting out of that.
Through the Chair to Board Member, Member Joyce, we, we can break that down to these specific ones. So later on in the press, I have a chart that is more high level, where it might combine a couple of the categories together. But if you want something this specific, you can.
Once we get to that chart, maybe we'll do a double check at that point as to how to break it down based on what you're looking at. How about that?
Okay.
Because it is bucketed, not broken down. Vice Chair Pearson.
Um, two items. One is, I did a ten finance two point O. I do think I'm less confused, but still not there all the way. But something came up in the discussion, so I sent an email back, um, asking about survey three and how many students we had had join our schools after survey three. I don't, it might be interesting to know, um, if I, and Mr. Wright gave me his number, so if I misinterpret them, please correct me on these. From charter, coming into DCPS from charter schools, we had one thousand sixty-four students. And then from outside of the district coming into DCPS, we had one thousand two hundred fifteen, for a total of two thousand two hundred seventy-nine students who joined our schools after the third calculation, which means that we received no financial compensation for those students. So, um, that's, anyway, I thought that was interesting and, and always, um, you know, wanna, wanna bring that up. That, to me, that seems like a lot of students that were, were educating without any compensation. Uh, the other question I had has to do with the Florida Empowerment Scholarship or whatever it's gonna be called going forward, and I think you somewhat answered it. Uh, my question is, if the base funding is sitting at around forty-six hundred for, um, traditional and charter public schools, why is the Florida Empowerment Scholarship worth about seventy-eight hundred dollars per student? It seems like if the money follows the student, the amount of money that a student would get in public school would be the amount that would follow the student. Now, it may be that we get thirty-two hundred dollars per student out of our taxes, and I'm just, I didn't, you know, maybe. But it does seem like the value of the scholarship is higher than the value of the base funding for students who are in our public schools.
Through the Chair to, um, Board Member Pearson, this is just the base student allocation. And so the amounts, and I have a chart that they provided us for proposed, um, amount. So last, oh, I say last year, this year, the amount per FTE for family empowerment. So in the background of all of this, there are amounts that is the payout that they disperse out from Tallahassee. And then you've got this funding that the district receives. And so the funding for family empowerment, we don't ever see that money, that money. Even though it is in our FTE, it is in our funding, it's in our budget, it's not part of our budget. We can't spend that money. We can't do anything with that. So the amount that you are seeing, most likely, if you look at the document that I sent you, if you look at the very bottom, it'll have funding for FTE. Those amounts down at the bottom are closer to what's getting paid out now. And it depends on the program weight of the students. So if there's a student that's a, that requires ESC, they're a two fifty-four, a two fifty-five, it's a lot more. So they have provided us a chart of what's being paid out now. And I also have a chart that is what is proposed to be paid out for next year. The base amount is around eight thousand, it's more than this year. So not only is the FTE increasing, the amount to be paid out is also a lot. In the House version, that includes, um, the family empowerment. Right now, their estimate, now this estimate includes the impact of the House of the bill, is about two hundred and fifteen million dollars. You don't see that anywhere, but if you dig through a lot of the information that has been provided through FAGS and FSBA, right now, the estimate is two hundred and fifteen million. Where right now, we're at eighty-seven million. So like I said, they're going to recast, reestimate our FTE. And so it is very difficult to tell where we might land. It just depends on how they decide to make the changes to the funding formula and how they decide to change our FTE forecast. So that's, that's the difference between this base funding. Like I said, look at the bottom, those numbers are closer to what's being proposed to be paid out.
Keep it going.
Keep it going. All right. Okay. So that, this is, this is information we provided, I wanna say it was back in twenty twenty-one when we received the third round. Um, yes, if you see at the bottoms, these are what we use when we develop the ARP. If you see ARP, that's the third round of the ESAR funding. Because the amount was so large, it was like three hundred and forty-three million dollars, we wanted to receive input, um, from the public through the survey. And you can see here how many participated and what types of participants they were, what category. And then this next slide shows where they landed as far as what they would like to see us fund, use the funding for. And as you can see, there's a, there's a variety, um, of things. And a lot of them are the categories that you saw on the other slide. So as anything that we do, we try to align the budget or initiatives against the board's strategic plan, so that we can meet the goals of that plan. And so this is just a step aside to provide the goals and the guiding principles and the different initiatives that fell under the, both of those. I don't know if you have any questions on that, um, but that's just some general information on that. So, Board Member Joyce, this is for you. So this is a combination of all three rounds. And we can break this up, I have the information to break it up between one, two, and three, if you'd like. But for the three rounds, we were awarded just over five hundred and two, almost five hundred and three million dollars. As of last week, we have spent the two hundred and eighty-two point five million dollars. I broke it down underneath, um, between charter, district, private schools, and also indirect cost. And I also further broke down the two hundred and forty-two million that the district has spent into these different categories off to the right. Um, as you will see, the majority. Um, as you will see, the majority of the money that the district has spent has gone towards schools, is the hundred and three point eight million dollars. Now, there's a little note at the bottom, it does include school-based positions. So that way, we wanted to show the support that we provided the schools. And all of these items, we can easily break them down into the other categories that were on the other slide. Okay, okay. But, but these are the different categories for all three, we can provide it separated if you'd like. But I have some information past this slide as to how much we spent for each one. So I'm gonna pause for a second if there's a question or if you wanted to add something to what you wanted.
No, just, um, what was the allowable uses? What did we spend for those allowable uses? I think this is just too vague for me.
On page ten, the survey results. They have a broad category that's pretty high, it's called various other thoughts. Can you help us understand what that would include? It makes sense support for, to address learning loss, that makes sense, bonus of higher pay. And then right behind that is the various other thoughts. That's a big bucket, I agree.
Through the chair to board member Jones, it, it was things that didn't fit in the categories of allowable expenses. But we did not wanna, not cut.
So these were not allowable expenses?
Or they might've been so specific, like I think you should give so-and-so a raise. So it was various thoughts about what they felt we should use the money. So some of it was, well, we're not allowed to use the money for that. Like pay for, we should get field trips, remember students also participate in this survey, so. So we just came this category, various thoughts. Or pay for grad batch, you can't use funding for that.
Pay to school board them with.
Sick buddy ever.
I wanna beat that person.
So on this next slide, this doesn't have any descriptions of what we spent it on and giving work on that for member Joyce to divide it up. But this is where we, I just wanna specifically, the charter school funding piece, I don't want that included. I want, what did the district receive and how we broken down that.
You may have tagged in and broken down by each of the different ones.
So all, all three.
A total, and then each of the different ones, so we can see
Total and all three rounds, just the district.
If round one, we were heavy in this, round two, we were light, or does that make a difference for round three? Yeah.
Through the chair, it, it's also important to know the allowable expenses were different for each round. And round one, it was mainly on COVID, COVID, COVID. It was round two that we got categories and said you had to spend here, here, here. And then round three was you had to get input to determine, so. It's, I just want, it's just important to note that allowable expenses was across all three, but we had different guidance for what we could do with S R one, S R two, and then S R three.
I think I remember.
So it's just.
It'll make a difference.
It just makes.
When you look at it, you might go, well, why did we spend so much on X and S R two? Because we had the different buckets that we were required to spend.
No, Dr. Green, I think I remember in correspondence to the board, you had a summary of each of those at some point. We just have that summary, it seemed like we were provided a pretty condensed summary of these categories.
Cause S R two was broken up into lump sum and then these categories. That, you know, you had a technology category, you had a, a learning loss category.
Yeah, thank you.
And if there is a minimum requirement for each category, for example, technology of the funds, you have to spend at least this amount of money.
Yes, and two, they gave us dollar amounts. So technology, I'm gonna make up a number, I don't really remember what it was, but technology fifteen million. And then, I don't remember what the, what they did tell us how much in each category were you supposed to take.
So if you can do it, some kind of condensed summary.
Two is the one that was very.
Right, this, not this, when it was just a rule that would have prohibited. And I'm confident Mr. Colbert could have spent the fifteen million very quickly, and it was more.
Probably wish, I don't know.
Well, what I will do for S R two specifically, cause there were specific buckets we were re, I will split that out separately, but everything I'm going to do will just be for the district.
Sure, and then just so I'm clear, if technology, for example, is fifteen million, then under all of those categories that fall under technology, I just wanna know, like, how much was spent under each, um, item?
Each initiative.
From that other sheet.
Okay.
And then projected with S R three.
Okay. Okay, alright, so this is just a very high level overview of where we are as far as expenditures as of last week in the three different rounds. So this is the one that has already closed. As you will see, the district spent all of ours. There was a little bit left in the charter, very small, um, but as you will see, there were some amounts left. Um, so those are amounts that we are not, no longer can repurpose, do anything with. So this is how it closed back in September. This is the first round. The second round, which had multiple categories, it got a little bit unwieldy as far as putting it all on one slide nicely neat. But the total funding was the hundred and forty-three. The, you can see the breakdown between district, charter, and private, and where we are as of right now. There's a column there that says rolled into new grant by D O E. If you will remember, the academic acceleration, and I forgot the other category.
Attendants.
Now, and reenrollment. Those were the two, we got notification from D O E saying it was closing. You had, you won't lose your money, it'll roll into a new grant, uh, which it did. But that, I wanted to be transparent and show you that piece of it because there, when I break it up, I will break that also into the different categories. But as of right now, as of last week, the district has about eight point five left, which is six point eight two percent of our budget. And then charter has about four million left, which is about twenty-three percent of their eighteen point five um, million dollar budget. And this is, this grant closes out in September of twenty twenty-three, so. So the next round, this is S R three. This is the much larger grant where we've got the community input in. Um, as you will see there, it, we've spent a hundred and thirty-seven million dollars altogether in that seventy-six million dollars, seventy-six, seventy-six million dollars that's combined in encumbrances and commitments. That is a combination of pending purchase requisitions and open purchase orders. And there is an amount there that we have reserved, that we, that we will determine what other initiatives they can go to. Um, so we do have a balance of twenty-five point nine seven, but there is a little bit more in that seventy-six that we need to, um, maybe determine what other initiatives we can, can do. But this is just a very high level, very simple summary of where we are in the three rounds. That slide, that was three slides, that is a combination of these three slides. And so there's only so much information you can put on a slide. But the, the document that I'll prepare that breaks it down will have a lot more detail in it that you're requesting. I wanted to include this slide, these are just some of the things to consider. I know you've been involved and heard a lot of discussion about particular, um, areas. One of them is the capital outlay, the House Bill twelve fifty-nine and the companion thirteen twenty-eight. So the way it works now is that school districts do not have to share their one point five until a certain criteria is met, with, if the state funding is not enough. We had to share one time back in the seventeen eighteen year, we did have to share, but hasn't, we haven't had to share since. What this legislation is proposing is a couple things. It takes out that criteria, it basically just says you have to share. One version is all sixty-seven school districts have to share. The other bill is just the school districts with a hundred thousand F T E or more. So we would be part of that whichever version should pass. So based on the estimated property values that we talked about earlier, I did a very rough estimation of what that might mean to us. So for the one point five, if it's not phased in over a five-year period, which I think both of them do at this point. So if it weren't phased in, it would be a total of twenty-two point five million dollars, which is an estimate of about four point five per year. And that's just the estimate for next year. That would change every year based on whatever our certified property values are. So it would change, so that number right there is just an estimate. I'll know better when I get the information in June and July, but that number could change, or not could, it will change every single year. So that's one piece. It won't affect necessarily our general fund budget, but it is a consideration to think about as we talk about the master facility plan, the five-year capital plan, those types of documents. So the second piece that I wanted to discuss.
Vice Chair Pearson, you had a question?
I'm sorry.
This is, this would be a quick question. Um, if the five-year phasing plan is the one they go with, we're sitting at, um, a hundred one thousand students. If we were to drop below, and I'm hoping we actually grow, but if we were to drop below a hundred thousand, say in year two, would we roll out of that category? Or is it once you're in, you're in?
So the, the way that the legislation is written, it's all dependent upon, there's a whole different F T E called capital outlay F T E. That is really students that are in buildings. So, and that number changes every year also.
As you wouldn't include virtual because they're not in the building, so they don't benefit from it, so it cleans the calculation out.
Right, so that number changes every year also. We receive preliminary information, we call it COFTI. We receive preliminary information of what they may be. And then at the end of the year, we receive the final. And so everything has to be trued up. So, um, hopefully, you know, we'll get more information on this, but it would depend, it depends every year what your combined capital outlay F T E is. And cause you have to, and you also have to add the charter schools to that also. So I would not anticipate that we would ever be below a hundred thousand F T, we would have to be like in the seventies to not be.
I interpreted it as a combined.
It is combined, it is combined, it's, it's the capital outlet, the district's COFTI plus the eligible charter, so it wouldn't be the full charter schools, it would be the eligible charter schools. That's how the, the legislation is currently written. But I don't, because you have to add those two for the, I would not anticipate that we would be below a hundred. Okay, okay, so the next area, if nobody has any more about that. So every year, there is a retirement bill that is filed that always has the proposed rate for next year. So as we were billed, before this bill came out, um, the rate would have gone to, for regular class, would have gone to eleven point nine one. What they are proposing in House Bill two thirty-nine and Senate Bill seventy twenty-four, there's a couple things. But the main thing to notice is this bill would, their estimates of what retirement might increase is either going to be, depending on where they're gonna come together, the high is the House bill of forty-one point six million. And the low is the Senate, which is six point seven. I would imagine, I haven't heard anything definite where they're going to land on, on this right here. But either way, um, retirement goes up every year, it just does. This year, it's almost a full point, even, percentage point even without these bills. And so we are watching to see where it might land cause it's going to have a very large impact on how we budget salaries and benefits for district and school-based employees. So that's happening, and then we've already talked about the family empowerment bill. It's expanding, and so like I said, when the legislative session is finished or when they come to an agreement as to how we're going to be funded, the, um, legislative committee is going to do a new estimate from, for our F T E, so.
Board member Jones.
Through the chair, excuse me, the, uh, extend the maximum amount of participation from sixty calendar months to ninety-six. What are they referring to now? I'm not sure.
So current, through the, through the chair to board member Jones, so currently the drop participation is five years, the sixty months, and it's going to expand it to ninety-six calendar months.
So a person can stay and drop for ninety-six months?
Instead of sixty.
The teacher showed it in the sixties.
They've moved that number around.
I do want to reiterate about H B two thirty-nine on the retirement. If they go with the five point seven two percent, that is a dagger for school districts. That funding would be coming from, they're not, they're not adding, currently, they're not adding additional funding to cover that forty-one point six million dollars. That, that would be devastating for the school district.
That's all school districts.
All school districts. Well, this is our.
That's our number.
That's Duval's number, I, I believe it will be devastating for all school districts.
And any, any agency that participates in F R S, this will impact all. Yes, uh, the bulk, however, of the impact, the numbers that are coming out of Tallahassee, the bulk of, of the, um, total impact, um, is school districts.
But again, it would include all entities such as state employee, judiciary, so all of them are watching this and using their lobbyists.
Any agency that participates in the Florida retirement system, this would impact them also. Um, as, just to tie some things together, as Dr. Green indicated, there is no additional funding for this. And as I indicated multiple slides ago, the funding's basically flat. So that's another consideration, that's why I wanted to add this here as a consideration to when we're building our budget. Are there any other questions on, there's other legislation, but these are the good ones. These are different, I'm gonna say big categories. So, these are different, I want to say big categories of where a lot of, of where we anticipate costs to increase. Now, the numbers that are in the charts for twenty-two, twenty-three, because we're not at the end of the year, that's an estimate based on what's been budgeted, except for salaries. For salaries, we took what was actually been paid as of today, as of a certain date, and then we ran the report that projects out what we may have to pay for the existing. So, for the salary information, that is based on our best information we have available through today. And so, there's going to be some numbers here that look large, but this is a large school district, so everything we do has a large impact. So, as you can see, healthcare, um, we may have had discussions related to healthcare. We are projecting at the end of the year to be just under eighty-five million dollars. In the box below, we're projecting a three point five three percent based on where we are now, where we were last year, and what we anticipate the cost may be, cost increases. So, three point five three percent of the eighty-five million is going to be around eighteen point six. That is also based on how we calculate our benefit rate. We calculate our benefit rate on all of them based on actual activity. And so, the rate for benefits for healthcare between this year and next year is anticipated to increase three point five three percent. That's what we're budgeting for next year. So, that'll have an impact. Now, the five, now, these are just general fund numbers. This is not across the board. This is just general fund. And so, that's eighteen point six. Salaries, there's been giving raises to everybody for the last couple of years. Teacher salary increase allocation has funded part of that. So, this year and last year, the state provided us an amount to fund the prior year. So, going forward into the twenty-three, twenty-four year, we do not see where they will be providing funding for prior year, um, for prior year increases. And so, this year and last year, our share of that, because we have to share that categorical with charters, that was covered about twenty million dollars. So, we received this year about thirty-six million dollars, and about twenty-four of that was supposed to fund one year prior. But as you remember, future salary increase allocation has been around for a couple of years, but it only funds, funded one year prior. All the other years of increases has to be funded by the district. And so, this number down at the bottom, that fifty point six, that is the accumulated cost that is not going to, that will no longer be funded by teacher salary increase. And so, that covers all employees, but just general fund. So, now retirement, that is just based on the current retirement rate that they're proposing. This does not include the increase of the two bills that are currently pending. So, with, even without that, those two bills coming, we are going, we are projecting it to go up by five point one million, just in general fund alone, because it's going up to eleven point nine one percent. Um, now, energy and utilities. So, we looked at where we were with both energy and utilities a year ago at the same time. Both fuel and electricity is what's driving both, is a very large percentage increase, and it, but those are the two areas that are driving the increase. Um, they asked, are you sure that's right? I'm sure that's pretty reasonable. Um, but we want to be able to know what areas are increasing, because like I indicated before, our budget, you need to expect that our budget funding for traditional schools are going to be flat. They're going to be flat. So, if we have all of these increases, this doesn't even include, I didn't conclude custodial, which is another thing you have to do. But transportation, based on the information that we currently have, and it's not scheduled to be rebid yet, this is just a regular increase, a regular increase. So, that's a, that'll be another four point five million dollars. And these are just, like I said, these are the big buckets of where, where the increases are going to be. Yes, ma'am?
Chair, I'm, I'm just curious about the healthcare spike and why we were so well in twenty-one, twenty-two and skyrocketing from there.
Twenty-one, twenty.
You see down, yeah, you see the dip, there's a huge dip and then a big spike. So, do you, do you have an explanation for that sharp change?
I will have to look at that number because I know it looks like a big dip, but it's I'm trying to think.
You could, I'm, Ms. Schultz is.
Okay.
Here.
Is that the year, um, that we gave the monies from ESER so that it went down?
That's what it is.
Okay.
That's what it is. Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Yes, we, we were able in.
I was feeling the vibe.
I know. I had to think for a second. And ESER too, yes, we were able to reimburse healthcare costs, COVID-related costs. So, what our carrier was able to do was to provide information that was just COVID-related claims.
Okay. Thank you.
I had forgotten. It's been a while. But it, it was quite a bit of money of what caused that large.
I remember some of the hospitalization stays alone, were in the six figures for individual people.
But luckily.
It was close to ten million.
It was a lot.
Yeah, that we were able to move from.
We did it twice. So, but, but luckily, we were able to get that specific information from our carrier to split it between regular claims and COVID-related claims.
Yes. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. So, so, so this is moving forward. Like I said, this is just all information that we have available. Um, so, going forward, we're going to continue the implementation of budget-guiding principles. So, back in, I want to say two thousand and seventeen, finance and administration created a document of what would be guiding principles of how to build the budget, what we needed to follow, that types of things. Um, we do have a document. I don't know if you all have seen it, but it's from two thousand and seventeen. And this is what we use to guide how we actually build our budget. And so, we're going to continue to do that so that we'd be able to meet, um, the goals of the board and the strategic plan. And then. I guess I'm wondering, why are we using a document from two thousand and seventeen when our strategic plan has changed and our goals have changed? So, through the, through the chair, the board member Joyce. Although our strategic plan has changed initiatives and that type of thing, there's still good foundational financial practices, um, that are, one, they're good business practices. There's also, you know, the, the different rules that we have to follow as far as GASB and that type of thing. So, these are the financial principles that we use to build the budget to support the strategic plan. So, they're not necessarily principles that would impact necessarily the strategic plan. It's more of how we build the budget. So, those principles and processes still support how we do that. So, in two thousand and seventeen, I guess, did we not have a document that supported that? And if we did, why did it change in two thousand and seventeen? So, Chair, the board member Joyce. So, what that document did was it brought together different policies and procedures we haven't, we haven't placed in writing. We do. We have multiple, um, standard operating procedures and that type of thing. What we did was we brought certain policies and procedures together that were, I would say, critical to building a budget. Like, we didn't put in there something that would be on the desk manual, like, how do you create a journal entry? It, they were things more like how we would build the budget. One of them was to, to build the budget in the system, to make sure that if we put a position in place, we had to ensure that we adequately budgeted all positions. So, those types of guiding principles, um, we just brought things together. Don't think there was one comprehensive prior to seventeen, but we do have, in each area in finance, we do have multiple, um, standard operating procedures. All right. And so, um, so these are the different areas that we may want to consider as we move through building the budget. I know questions have come up related to ESER. And so, you can see that second bullet and then the last bullet relate to ESER. Um, as you know, since COVID and the pandemic, the FTE for schools, depending on your schools, could have gone up, could have gone down, has had a different effect on multiple areas. Um, we do have multiple schools who have FTE of less than three hundred, some are right at two hundred. And so, we do have to support them by providing additional funds because their FTE does not generate everything they need in order to adequately support. And so, like I said, these are just some things for considerations for, um, as we move forward. Um, as the session progresses and we receive more information, I'll be incorporating that into our next budget presentation. Um, like I said, there's, there's a, there's nothing firm yet in Tallahassee as it relates to how we're going to be funded. And with the session ending closer to May, the end of May, um, that makes it a challenge to put a budget together to be ready by July through your vote. So.
And I know that you just touched on this, but, um, I'm just wondering, once we get a finalized budget from the state, when can we expect to hear, um, back from you and the superintendent regarding any adjustments we might need to make to the budget? And my other question is, I know that since, uh, my time and Mr., uh, Board Member Jones's time on the board, um, our benefits aspect of our budget has been very huge. And I would like to know, um, and growing and, and carrying, you know, we've, we've had conversations about that. What have we done, um, to look at options of, um, getting some control over that growing expense?
So, through the chair, the board member Hershey, the benefit rate is the composition. So, at least two of the components are fixed. I can't change, they're not, there's no flexibility. Retirement, which is set by the state, and then, um, social security Medicaid. So, those two are set no matter what. And then the smaller component would be things like workers' compensation, life insurance, that type of thing. The biggest component that is in that would be, you know,
So.
That's the biggest component.
What have we, what are, has the district done to, um, look at options or explore options regarding healthcare to see if there are other companies or agencies that might be able to be more competitive in offering benefits that employees need at a rate that may, um, have less financial impact on the district?
I'm going to defer to Ms. Schultz.
I'll let you go first, Ms. Schultz.
Through the chair, we did, um, take that item out to RFP this year, um, to get, um, something more competitive, although, um, our current provider is the only one that submitted. Um, and so, therefore, we are back with the same exact vendor, but we do work with them, we negotiate with them. And, um, we have an insurance committee that reviews what we're doing, and, um, we will be presenting hopefully to them in the coming months, a plan for the upcoming, the upcoming year, which doesn't really start till January twenty twenty-four because it runs, um, a different calendar than the school year. And, um, that's where we're at with that.
Through the chair, the board member Hershey, we, we will be requesting a shade so that we go over our healthcare. I don't know if you remember, it might have been two years ago, kind of showed you down the line that in twenty twenty-five, it would be, it wasn't looking good till twenty twenty-five. It requires not just a change of what the district, but it requires, um, cost of employees contributing. So, that's why for the zero base plan, I think we went to an HMO. But even in doing that, you're, you're still going to see that cost is going up.
So, through, through the chair, um, I, I just want to, so our commitment with our current provider goes through twenty twenty-four. Did I hear that correctly? And, um, I am aware of another company that is very interested in presenting to the board. I mean, not to the board, but to the district, um, about plans for benefits. And I would just strongly encourage the, the district to, um, however, RFP, you know, get that information, however RFPs are done, um, because I think we can do better.
Board member Joyce.
I agree with Board Member Hershey, and I just don't, I can't wrap my mind around all of the healthcare companies that provide healthcare in the country. And we have one company that submits to the, I, I just can't understand that. So, I don't know if maybe we're, we need to relook at what the RFP says so that we can open it up to more companies participating or at least providing. But, you know, this is not, for me, it's not something that is just healthcare. It's so many things that we go out for an RFP for, and we get one or two companies that submit. And I just, I, for me, that's unacceptable. I'm just put that there.
So, a question, um, in regards to, I, I don't know whether this is a Duval-specific issue or whether this is other counties. Is there a way to find out, um, are Orange, Broward, Dade, when they put out, or I'd just like to know, when they put out for their health insurance, is there a way to public record request or get from them? Um, are they only getting one or two bids? And I'd like to hear it for food services, um, and maybe also transportation, because those seem to be the big ones, um, so that we can see, is this Duval-specific? And maybe it is part of our RFP process, we're not advertising, whatever. Or is this districts with a hundred thousand, not a hundred thousand or more, nobody wants to touch for some reason? So, I think if we could find out from Orange, the big seven, Orange, if we could find out from them on those country and get that information back. So, we know if we're in the boat with other people or we're, we're on our own.
And even if we are in the boat with other people, we still have to do something because, the end of the day, this are the big bucket items. This is where the district is spending the absolute most money on. And we see, in my opinion, a crisis coming for the board. And we see, in my opinion, a crisis coming for the board. And so we've got to be thinking outside the box or doing something so we can manage this.
I agree, but just to, if you've got a problem, we've got to understand what the problem is in its fullest. I do agree, we have a problem. What is the problem in its fullest? What are the implications? Because if we find out another district's got plenty, we can go say, what are you doing differently? I mean, it's just good information.
I'd also like to know, to that point, is there a department within the district that oversees our, the, you know, the, the RFPs and everything else that's responsible for that? Because it's not just a matter of, do other people get input? Perhaps there's a need for some reorganization within that department within the district as well.
I, I've actually put RFP process, one of the things is Board Chair I do, when we have a topic we seem to be hitting on. And this was one we hit on a couple of months ago and we had to plug it in. I'm just putting this, and I'll put it on my list of topics that we know. It may be that we need to, once we get that information, we swing back, we get a presentation on, from start to finish, what does it look like? And so we get a better understanding. So I've just listed it as well. I appreciate the feedback. Other thoughts, Vice Chair Pearson.
Hi, verified this because I thought I had heard. But this was for the fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. The governor announced that the surplus for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two was twenty one point eight billion dollars. The highest in state history and more than twenty one percent above the state budget for the fiscal year. So the state of Florida is not experiencing a recession, it seems like. The state of Florida seems to have a budget surplus in the billions, and yet our funding is flat.
Board Member Carrion.
Yeah, I was just trying, it's, it's, going back to the RFP process. It would be great, I think, for the board to be notified when those go out.
Um, what we can do, actually, if we do the presentation about how does it all work, we can have legal talk us through what you can and can't know when and where. There are some times when we're, it's silent and this, and so he can walk us through that process so that we're aware. There's also, there is a website where all of them are put out as well. And certainly in the interim, you could do that, but it's not bad. It's an interesting, interesting thought. We could have that as part of the dialogue. But then also wouldn't be a bad reminder for all of us to know at what points are we aware of things? And at what point is it a scenario where we're in negotiation and we're out and all that kind of good stuff? We've recently dealt with that. Well, I've definitely tagged that as a topic for us at this point, so with some of the criteria that you all mentioned. Any other questions for budget? All right, I tell you what, we've got two more topics at this point. Douglas Anderson School of the Arts Investigation update of legal counsel and governments. Do you all need to take a break? I need you to stretch. I'm looking at the clock. Let's do a quick, uh, let's do till eleven forty five. And as a, and because we're gonna do a quick break, we're gonna leave all mics and all video on. So just FYI on that, so we don't have to switch systems in and out for that time. Okay. No, no problem. I know you've been sitting for a minute, sorry about that. Yes, we've met before. That's our school. Language learning.
You know, so it's still helpful when I was there. I was like, oh, that's nice.
Yes, implementation. Because we're not allowed, we all want to help.
But she did say that I could, that if I was not, I might be way excited to stay here.
Say the principle will allow us. Is there okay? It's never computer. But we can't do it if we don't have a media special.
Okay.
That's what, that's what she's being told.
Okay.
See what I'm saying? Because we have them.
I, let me just, because I was gonna check, right? But here's the problem.
I mean, you know.
Yeah, now is yours, like, yeah. Was she full time or split? Yeah, so.
I really heard you.
We shared because you, you filed, they asked you. They just heard the done thing.
Which means the students.
Question three hundred and fifty. Right, but what we're doing now, we got literally every school. Thank you. Because we just. I'm not supposed to be doing it today. I've got two more field trips this week. And I'm sure that I was gonna have some experience. So that's a problem. I volunteered to go in. And I thought I was gonna be experienced like old target. And it was hard Saturday, but then just prior to the magnum. I forget now what's called, but you've got other districts to, yes.
Stand as long as possible.
And we've made it two parts.
Now, now I'm, this is the second part.
It's fine. The implementation is horrible. And principals and teachers are. And some made it, I don't know. And they reached out to Mr. Daley. I have written that.
I have, I don't have a lot.
So that list. Okay, thank you. Read list or whatever. That list, they weren't. So that's real estate. I spent, I'm gonna make sure, for nine and twelve.
Only six this month. Supposed to nineteen.
And if you're refreshing, it's public comment. If it makes decisions about how to do it. You have people doing it differently. So you're trying to build a system. We don't have your physical access. Makes it really bad.
What are you doing?
Okay, I don't believe so.
Oh, hi. No, I mean, just.
And we can do six twenty, six twenty, six twenty, and then after that, we can pass it. Yeah, that's the problem with it. Have to be on the website. We do have it at six twenty. We don't, we have to be at the wrong school on this one. At one, Wednesday. A different school, correct? So the meeting's like, or it won't. It'd be, we'd have meetings like.
The meeting's like, tomorrow.
Why can't I turn on these candles? So you have no option as a door. People are trying to get their face. And no. There isn't a box now.
That's a good sign, and the destiny's gone.
Okay, well, so my experience with the year, nine o'clock, nine thirty, was first of all, because I may not know to come over. But it hasn't been a week yet. You know, associations, you find the title, you find either, find the title association. And it has written on the side, or you don't find it. Yeah, it's great to stay, but no, it's, it's not. It's not, it's not, it's not gonna be. No, I know, I get stressed. Oh, that's okay. I didn't know you were gonna be in here. I thought, oh, Connie won't be in there. And so they, they were having fun putting out all my stuff. They were like, we're gonna take her badge. No, I appreciate it. I appreciate you giving it to us. We know that, we truly, yes, we truly feel that. And that's why I told them I would come for this. But that's okay, I already had a field trip yesterday, I have to catch you. Connie, I feel jumping in. It's a dress.
Be spoken, risky, and the mid.
I would have been passed that interview too. Or they do tell me about the field trip, so.
So after.
Because you're trying to.
So after your support today, I can fly to you tomorrow. We genuinely.
You're just a team member.
We genuinely want to try.
I would say we have a good.
But you know, change, don't. It's in the bud, going straight to it and.
Well, you had the call with them and so, no, I haven't. I don't think she's received.
I'm staying for a year. I wasn't here to watch you, but I was here.
I haven't seen any legislation come through yet, but I'm expecting it. Exactly.
Aren't you cold?
Cold, I'm actually not, I brought my, I brought my little.
Oh, it's cold.
I'm actually, I mean, I'd rather be cold than hot.
I brought for a guest last.
Guess I'm running warmer today.
You're running warm.
Running warm.
No, I'm.
Yeah, my car does that sometimes. There you go. Ran a lot. I run warm from time to time, but that's a product of.
Yeah, that may have.
The thing is, he made me, like, when I was carrying him, I felt a little red, like that kid is hot.
That's funny.
And he made me hot.
I think he came out like. Yeah, I'm darn thrilled. I'm either one of you.
He has a sweater in between.
I'm the same way. I'm either like, I'm cold right now with two layers on or I'm hot. There's no in between. I find that in my car, I have the AC warmers and coolers. I can go either way. And I find that they run all the time. I just switch from cold to hot to cold. All year long. I know, but we need to.
But without sweating, you know?
And when you get, and when you get a hot, I do. My extremities are. Oh, yes, I saw it, sent it to Ash. That comes up. So, oh, as human beings, we're so quirky.
Big fluffy socks on or.
I feel his smash. Save my eyes a little bit. And a pure one in short. I'm waiting for Board Member Jill White. Up there she is. Coming back. All right, we are gonna go ahead and reconvene at this point. So I have asked, um, I have asked Mr. Poole to provide an update on Douglas Anderson School of the Arts Investigation in terms of the third party counsel and where we're going so that we can keep this moving for the public. And so at this time, I will turn it over to him and then we can ask questions and get some more thoughts and feedback so we can keep it moving.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through the Chair to the Board. First of all, I want to thank Mrs. Begley for setting the somber tone with her sobering presentation. I'll try to, I've never been a middle school principal, but I'll try to make sure I use, usually, projection is not an issue. Let me, I start off, I will give you the short answer of where we are and then I'd like, and then I can back up and fill you in on some of the details. I had a call yesterday at five o'clock with Jason Teal, Sean Granite, who you may know is a deputy, he's over civil litigation with a tour personally for the employment and civil rights type cases. John Phillips, who's also a Deputy General Counsel, who deals with other types of civil litigation for, and on behalf of consolidated government. And of course, you, you know who Jason Teal is and so. And so what I'm trying to do is kind of interface with them, because they're, two of them, well, one of them in particular, Sean Granite, will be overseeing or monitoring things from a litigation perspective. And so interfacing with them on this outside investigation. Where we are, and I actually had a hope to be able to come to you and say, there's a firm or a group of firms that we've landed on that have been vetted, unfortunately, not there yet. So, so that's still being reviewed across the river. As well as a consideration of, you know, talked about the scope of the investigation. And so that's still under review to make sure that everyone's concerns are addressed by the scope of the investigation and also that, that it addresses the potential litigation concerns as well. So that's where we are. And then I'll back up and tell you more detail. I think the last time we talked was last Wednesday, if I remember correctly. Since then, I'll tell you what I've done. At, at that point, there had been an attorney out of Tampa, along from Tampa, that had been suggested. There were some concerns voiced about that. I then met with Jason Teal last Wednesday on the twelfth, midday. Explained to him, you know, the recommendation or suggestion had been made, as well as talked out the concerns that had been voiced. He was gonna talk to Sean Granite or Granite. And then the following day, he, Jason Teal, Sean Granite, and I had a very lengthy discussion on April the thirteenth. About an hour. And we talked again about the selection of, you know, counsel or someone to, to do an investigation. And the, the difficult, the challenge is, there are very few people who check multiple boxes. And that is, you, there's an HR aspect, there's a HR in school districts that's unique to that. There's an aspect, there's a potential federal civil rights claim that we've, we've got to look at. And so you have to consider all those. We had a very lengthy. As you have to consider all those. We had a very lengthy discussion, at which time I reiterated, look, we're gonna have this meeting today at nine o'clock. Very much, if, if at all possible, like to be able to present some, you know, progress that we've made to that end. We're, we're just not there yet. Um, and I, again, have explained and, and relate to Jason Teal, the various concerns that have been voiced to me. Um, so that he's well aware of that. Yesterday at, um, and that was on the thirteenth, and then on Friday, the fourteenth, I again talked to Mr. Teal. So we've been in communication virtually every day for the last week and a half to two weeks, um, to sort of navigate this situation. Yesterday at quarter till four, I received word for the first time that the state attorney's office has now weighed in and expressed concern about our interest in having an outside investigator. This was news to me, and I'm hearing it secondhand. At which point, and I guess the concern is that somehow, some way, this investigation could possibly impede the criminal investigation. I immediately reached out to Mr. Teal. He and I spoke at four seventeen yesterday, and then again, uh, Mr. Granite was in a meeting. So that at five o'clock yesterday, we reconvened, if you will, conference call. At which time, we went through this, John Phillips, Sean Granite, Jason Teal and I, and we discussed the fact that the, uh, state attorney's office had concern. Again, at this point, none of us had spoken with anybody at the state attorney's office. I'm hearing this secondhand, um, and I'm passing it along. The belief and the opinion at that point was twofold. Number one, somebody needs to reach out to the state attorney's office, and that someone would either be Jason Teal or Sean Granite. Speak with, uh, the people over there who had expressed concern about our doing an outside investigation. To try to wrap our brain around what could possibly be the concern. The other thought was, well, gee, you know, although we don't want to do anything that's going to impede a criminal investigation, we also have an independent, you know, obligation to get to the bottom of things. Um, and so, um, you know, while we want to work with the state attorney's office, um, you know, that doesn't mean that we're not gonna do, have an outside investigation. So that's kind of where we are. And I have not, they were gonna reach out this morning. I have, I've monitored my texts and emails during the meeting to see if I've gotten anything. I haven't heard anything back from Mr. Teal about any meeting yet. So that's in a nutshell. If you have any specific questions, um, what I'm, what I try to do is talk about the process. Because we have received, you know, a number of, um, reports or letters or emails from concerning potential claims arising out of this, try to talk about the process and, and stay away from the, you know, the underlying facts or what have you. Because of that, but, uh, but that's where we are. And, and if you have any specific questions, I'll be happy.
And before you do that, a point was made to me this week in a conversation that I think might be prudent for all board members to hear, um, if you haven't had it happened, or had it referenced. If for some reason we're coming across information, um, in conversations with people, that could end up in this investigation. If the investigation has an outcome in the end, in the end, it could potentially impede us from being able to vote on those possible outcomes. Can you explain all of that?
Oh, that's.
So that all the board members are aware of this, because I don't think anybody wants to jeopardize their ability to vote on any outcome. I had this happen one other time since I've been on the board, because I knew an employee that was going through something, and a, and a reference was made. So I just, before we have any conversation, I think this is important for everyone to hear.
Yes, ma'am. Excellent point, and, and through the chair, as you know, well, Board Member Carney, I'm, you probably, you've not yet had the disclosure of doing this or dealing with this, but I'm sure you know. Within the school district, all employees have what's considered to be a property interest in their job, because there's no one that's truly at will, like in the private sector. And because you have a property interest in the job, you have a due process right to a hearing, and, and, and the short of it is, typically.
Um, I, you know, I've been on the board for a minute, and, you know, I, I understand that, because we've had, you know, at the end of the day, we do vote on a suspension or a termination of an employee. This, to me, is outside of the scope of what we have previously been brought before us for so many reasons. Um, and I feel an obligation, um, to ask questions, to investigate, to do whatever I need to do as a board member to make sure that this never happens again. Um, so I kind of see this, I, I understand this, but I see it as two different situations.
And, and through the chair, um, to Board Member Joyce, what, what I would suggest on that is, that would be something I would be happy to facilitate. And, and that's something, cause I understand, number one, I understand the desire to know, hey, during the course of this investigation, how are things going? You know, what's going on? What are you doing? How are things shaping up? And I get that. And I think there's a way to do that without running a risk of disqualifying yourself with respect to a particular employee. And so I think, you know, what I would offer would be to, to work with all of you to do that, so that we can navigate that, so you don't have to worry about it. It, it's really, it goes to, you know, if, let's say, for example, a former employee, so you don't run the risk, you can dig into stuff involving a former employee, because they're not, obviously, never gonna come before this board for disciplinary action. It's with respect to current employees is where it becomes, kind of, that, that's the touchy part. But again, I'd be happy, I would be happy to work with all of you on that, to help you navigate that, because the last thing I would, and the last thing any of you would, you know, be in that situation. Because I know that, our, your, see, that's how I.
And what I was struggling with is the fact that we don't know if there will be other employees. We don't know, and so we're in this interesting place. That, and so I'm, I'm finding that working very closely with counsel will keep things, as he said, if we work with them and each one of us individually work with counsel to do what we need to do in terms of being a board member, given the circumstances, which I totally agree with. Um, but also making sure we preserve our right to be that governing body that renders, should we have something come back to us for disciplinary action at some point. I'll go to Board Member Carney now, so.
Through the chair to Mr. Poole, so just to be clear, that fine line, it would be regarding, like, if we are asking questions about current employees regarding any kind of disciplinary action. So if we're just looking at state statute, or we're looking at, um, agreements that we may have with bargaining units, that type of thing, that's a different place. Is it solely based upon?
Yeah, and, and, and through the chair to Board Member Carney, yes.
Okay.
That's the short answer. Yeah, if you're looking at more of them, big picture, where it gets sticky, and I'll, what I can do, so you can read it, and you'll see exactly where I'm coming from. There's a, here's a, a case where a school board member got disqualified, and I can circulate that, just so you see.
I would just be curious enough, since I'm gonna be here for a little, for a little while.
It's a window in my brain.
You're gonna be there for a while.
But, but yes, so.
Yes.
Absolutely. That's why I'm bringing it to everyone's attention right now.
It's where it, it's where it comes down in its application to a particular person, and what that particular person did or didn't do, that could ultimately find its way into a disciplinary map.
Understood, I agree. I just think so many people are approaching, and, yeah, we just need, I know this case law I was unfamiliar with, and I felt the need as chair, cause I, it's brought my attention, that I needed to make you guys all aware of it as well. Um, so, Board Member Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, uh, I guess two concerns. One is, when will Officer General Counsel make a decision on the firm that's gonna do the investigation? That's what we want to move forward with. And two, I don't want the focus to just be on why that, the major concern is that this Anderson, I don't want the focus to be on just that. I think it should be district-wide. I mean, it could be happening in other schools that we're not aware of. A, a, a light has been shot, sh- shone on D A, but what happened to others? We have other, uh, 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 schools that may have the same, be experienced the same thing. We don't want to exclude them. So I just want to know, one, when do you anticipate that we'll be able to hire a firm to do the investigation? Cause time, you know, the longer we wait, the more people leave, the more people pass away who may have been part of this.
And, and through the chair to Board Member Jones, I completely understand and appreciate the, and I have repeatedly made that clear. That's why I've been in communication quite a bit, with Mr. Teal and, and others across the river. I defer to him as the general counsel, because ultimately, he, it, it, he's the one who decides. I would certainly, I would not be the least bit surprised if it's this week and the next couple of days. I, I think a big question mark, as we left it yesterday, they really want to talk to state attorney's office and make sure that we're not gonna have any grumblings there, although, you know, um, I, I had mentioned my wife used to be on the child protection team. They did forensic evaluations of kids who've been abused. You have to be careful how you, you question little kids, uh, as, so as not to taint what they have to say for criminal prosecution purposes. But, uh, you know, we're dealing with high school children. I'm not sure that that same level of concern arises. I'm not speaking as an expert in that, but just seems to me common sense. So I, I, I know they want to talk to them, um, which they plan to do today, and I, I would expect within the next couple of days.
It, it may be a good idea to have a shape meeting with the board to talk about some of the concerns, because you have a number of high-profile firms that are picking up clients. And so we know that's not a possibility that's hap- happening right now. So.
We've discussed this.
And through the chair to Board Member Jones, we, I have really, I've had several discussions with several, um, board members about that. What I'm trying to figure out is, it's somewhat of a rare, a round peg in a square hole, because litigation-shaped meetings, it's ongoing litigation. And then with, and then the, and then with respect to, uh, safety and security, that all seems to, the guidance that we get out of the Attorney General's office and otherwise, it all seems to revolve around a particular system, such as, you know, some sort of surveillance system. So you don't want to map out where all the cameras are or whatever. This is a little bit different scenario, where, where I'm trying to figure out is how we could do that. But safely so, um, and, and.
But we've got to meet the criteria, that, those are the sunshine criteria. We've researched it, and we've got to meet those criteria to get there.
That's, that's the rub.
Board Member Carney, you were saying.
And through the chair to Mr. Poole, in regards to the state attorney's office's involvement, do you think, and this could just be your personal opinion, do you think that they potentially have reached out because they would like to have their own investigation and not, like, I, I guess my question is, does it make sense for us to go ahead, make a decision, pull the trigger before the state's attorney's office gets involved? Or are they now showing concern because they, in fact, would prefer that we pull back and let them open an investigation?
I don't know. That's the, that's the best answer I can give. However, I think based on the discussion we had at the end of the day yesterday, they're gonna have to present a pretty compelling case in order to convince Mr. Teal that, um, that we can't or shouldn't do that. And, uh, I don't believe that that's possible.
Okay.
For that. That's, that's the best answer I can give you, right?
And, and, and I, I'm gonna remain hopeful that they just didn't understand that the intent of ours, they're investigating a, a person or person. We're investigating a system and processes and protocols and whatnot. We're, the criminal investigation is in their hands. We want nothing to do. We want just to understand processes, protocols, systematic items that led us to this moment potentially, and, you know, if those exist, how are they remedied?
My question is around that, and I'm wondering if we can get an answer, because in, this is a question for Jason, from what I want to know. Is, in the realm of that criminal investigation, is it possible that within the system, there would be, someone could be charged with being an accomplice to the actual crime that was committed because of systems that we had in place?
Not that I'm aware of. Now, whether, whether other, this is, I'm, this is completely from the hip, but I'll give you a from the hip. I don't know if chapter thirty-nine, you, you all know that with children who are abused and neglecting dependency actions. I know that there is a duty to report. Uh, if somebody fails to, uh, meet that duty or satisfy that duty, I do not know off the top of my head, I can take a report, like, cause I've got less law. Uh, whether there's any kind of criminal, maybe a misdemeanor for not recording, I, I don't know.
Let's not, let's not do research off the top of something that critical.
Well, I'm just wondering, that is.
No, absolutely. I think the research, let me say this, I think the research should be done, and it should be given to the board for information, absolutely. I just want to make sure it's, um, done thoroughly so that we get an accurate and not quickly.
And my point in saying that was, if the state attorney's office, if that is the scope of their investigation, there's no point in the board hiring another firm necessarily to look into those policies and even those procedures, because the scope of the investigation could already point in that direction if you're looking, you know. And that was really the intent of the question, is that depending upon what they're investigating.
is that depending upon what they're investigating would lead to what we need to, add the action we need to take as a board.
And, and through the Chair to Board Member Joyce, I have not seen any charge, formal, formal charge, uh, charging documents against this individual. I suspect that the root of their investigation is, did he actually do it? And was there consent? I think that's ultimately, and I, I think even consent may not be an issue because the age of the student, but, you know, it is sort of a he said, she said type of thing, but my guess is that's the focus of their investigation, just to be able to prove point-blank, he did it.
I, I appreciate this conversation, but I kind of want to circle back around to something that Board Member Jones said, and then to remind this board. Remember, Carney is the only one exempt, because she was not on the board. But, um, when the governor took office around twenty seventeen, or tw- or twenty nineteen, I guess it was, he immediately issued a, uh, grand jury to investigate. That grand jury report had a green, uh, report, and the third report was significant charge to Duval County. The final report in the first sixteen pages was a significant charge to Duval County, and I will quote from the public record of the grand jury report directed to us. "We encourage the citizens of Duval County to review the report and determine whether a more thorough house cleaning might be in order." We certain believe that that, that to be the case. And we, except for Board Member Carney, she wasn't here, she gets a pass on this, as a board, had a meeting and said, "We are going to do better." And we prom- and we said, "We acknowledged that we had past grievances that needed to be addressed, and we assured the public that we were going to do better." I believe that this board needs to meet and have a conversation and seriously look over the information from the grand jury report as how it applies to us today in this case. Uh, we can have that conversation. It'd be a very painful public conversation, but I, I believe that we need, I believe it needs to be had, and it can be had in private as a board, um, or we can have it publicly. But I, I'm ready to have that conversation, and I think that it's, um, important for this board to acknowledge and take action to ensure the safety and security, uh, uh, of students. We said we were going to make changes and hold people accountable and these kinds of things, and, um, I, I, I've got some, some concern. We were directed, and I, I know, I'm just, from my interpretation, my understanding, and my look at what we were directed to do by the grand jury and actions that failed to happen, um, since this report has come out, I don't understand how it's not failure to report, and I have high concerns. And we can have that conversation in pr- in public, or we can have it in private.
So, I'm gonna say something as Board Chair. Um, so as Board Chair, um, certainly anytime you all bring a topic to me that you bureau, that needs to be addressed, we do work towards making that ha- that item happen on a calendar. Um, I will say the type of conversation we're talking about with this, uh, we have a board member who's not here today. He is out of town. It was scheduled to be out of town for quite some time. It needs to be at a time when we're all present. We need to work with OGC to ensure that we're having it in the proper conditions, that meets sunshine, that take into consideration current and possible litigation that's going on, and the safety and well-being of children as well. Um, and I mean, safety and well-being meaning the mental well-being of students that are in our school district, um, as well. Um, and so what I will say as Board Chair is that the information is duly received, um, and, um, we can start working towards that if that's the, where the board is. Um, did you want to add?
Uh, through the Chair to Board Member Hershey, I'd be happy to talk to you offline and discuss that further with you, and, and always try to get to yes with, with all of you on the things that you, you want, and so perhaps you and I could talk and discuss that.
And if anybody else has, um, information that they want to work with them on, this, we would give enough time for people to be able to meet with OGC to talk with them about anything they might want to talk to them about prior to that meeting. Um, we'll make sure we can put time, so that everybody has the ability to talk with them. Is there anything else?
I, I would just like to say for, for public record that I concur with Board Member Hershey with her statements regarding the grand jury report.
All right, so, um, we'll work towards scheduling a meeting. I'm gonna work with OGC in regards to what does that meeting notice look like? What does that, uh, what are the conditions around it? And again, working with those, uh, we've got a lot of lawyers now involved in this because of the other litigation. All of that's got to be put together and combined um, to figure out how does it all work, and we'll follow whatever guidance counsel gives us in regards to how that meeting parameter, what, when, and, when and how it takes place, but we'll start working on that. That being said, I'll move to governance at this time, if I can. Is that good? Can I move to governance?
If you have another question, so, how is this, um, we're, we're scheduling another meeting. Thank you for doing that. But in the meantime, um, I don't know what Board Member, um, Willie's, uh, schedule looks like, but I think that, you know, I don't like hearing things from the media.
Absolutely. Me too.
Um, and I heard something on the news yesterday, um, that I did not know about, and so I reached out to, um, Mr. Poole. I would just like to know, how is, how are things going to be communicated to the board? You know, whether, and, and it may be, when Mr. Teal makes a decision, how is that going to be, how, what can the board expect? As far as what kind of, how we get, because this could probably happen before we have another meeting. How are we going to be notified of these decisions, or?
And, and through the, through the Chair, um, I would, as far as I'm concerned, you, you, you all know that you, you have an open line with me any time of day, any day of the week. And, and I defer to the board's wishes, obviously. I'm more than happy to call each of you individually and, and fill you in, once I have something definitive. Or, um, if you would prefer that I arrange with someone across the river to come and make, it, it is not necessarily an either or. It can be all the above. Schedule and coordinate with, with Mr. Brandon or Mr. Teal, somebody to come in and across the river and to address, um, yes, and answer questions.
Now, I'm wondering, may I ask, I'm gonna kind of tag onto your question. It may be that there's two different parts to this. One is, we potentially, and, and we've had meetings where we're public part and shade part, and so we could have the two meetings. Um, we're gonna need another meeting when they do make that recommendation. Um, and I'd like to do it a- as soon as, you know, anyway, so, and maybe we can have them simultaneously as well, the recommendation on the attorney, and then the other conversation as well. Okay. So what I'm hearing is that you're gonna be in contact with each board member as to kind of a status. Is that correct?
Yes.
But then it's incumbent upon us if we have any additional questions, we need to call him to, and ask those questions again. Because I will say, anytime I call him, he does answer the phone, so, or calls me back for a reason. So, um, let's all, let's all own some of this and make sure if we've got a question and we're uncertain about something, let's get, get on the phone. He's here for a reason. Let's get on the phone. Um, all right, so, any, any other questions on this topic? Okay. I'm gonna move to governance at this time. Um, are there any items for governance?
I do. Um, in the spirit of, this job calls us to hold many important things at the same time. Um, in our minds, I have a legislative item under you. Ms. Young, uh, Thompson alluded to it in the legislative update last night. Um, as you may remember, item four, the fourth bucket on our legislative priorities, talked about, um, split funding with step-up for students, so that the district could recoup the cost of the administrative responsibilities of administering the family empowerment scholarship. That was on our legislative priorities. It did not make it on FSBA legislative priorities. However, now it is on FSBA's radar, and they're willing to start talking, um, to members, um, about this. So I asked the staff to put together a financial impact, a list of the duties that districts have, whether they're implied or explicit in the legislation um, of unfunded administrative duties, and an estimate of cost to the district for those. Um, I see unreimbursed administrative duties as, um, important, um, and something that we would want to recoup the cost of the labor that we're doing in those things. So, I want to pass out to y'all, um, these, the sheet. This was what was referenced in, uh, Ms. Thompson's email from, uh, Ms. Weston, Wesley, Wesley. Um, just so you're aware, um, if you would be inclined to reach out, I'm gonna be sending something with this information to the Duval delegation, and also to Chair, um, Senator Simon, who's the sponsor of SB two oh two, and to Representative Tuck, who's the sponsor for HB one. Um, if you have others that you think, um, would be interested in, in hearing this, I will say that when I was in Tallahassee over spring break, I had a conversation about this with more than one member of the Duval delegation, who seemed to understand that, and agree that we should be reimbursed for the work that we are asked to do. I think there is, um, a lack of awareness of how the scholarships impact the workload on a district, and, and what the districts, the work that surrounds a district, whether a student is leaving public schools to go to private, or whether a student is currently enrolled in private and taking a scholarship to continue at that private school. I think as I sat in hearings, I felt like, um, at least one of the bill sponsors had no idea that was, that districts had responsibility for students who are not, who are taking the scholarship. So, I'm providing this to y'all.
Thank you for doing it. I'm excited that FSBA is taking up the action, because there's no question it costs us personnel. Um, and so getting reimbursed for that, just like we do with charter, makes sense. Um, other items for governance? Um, I have one small item, um, on a really pleasant.
I may not have one, I can go ahead.
Oh, no, I just didn't see your hand. Go ahead.
Right.
Go ahead.
Um, so, I am volunteering this week at schools in my district to help with the scanning of books into the classroom. So I thought I was gonna be experienced, kind of like if you go to Target and you take it to the scanner, and it pops up and it tells you, you know, it's five dollars or whatever. It's a much different experience, and I have some grave concerns about how we've handled, um, getting books back into the hands of students. Uh, Board Member Carney, I think, at, at one of the board moments between January and April, she, um, expressed concern, and, um, so my understanding that we do not have a district-wide, um, directive as to how each school should address books at their school. And I think that there is a time that we need to look like Cracker Barrel, or Starbucks, or Chick-fil-A, where there's this, when it comes to this, there's the sameness, we're all gonna do it the same. The other thing is, is that I love the idea that we're creating this system to identify our books and stuff like that. But I spent from nine until twelve-thirty in the media center of a library with thirty-one thousand books. That media specialist can only log in about a hundred books a day. Well, if you do the math, that's like three hundred and ten days to go through all the books. The idea in creating the system for the district is that I'm scanning books at my school, and on all the other hundred and three elementary schools, people are scanning books, so we're all adding to the system. But if not every media specialist is scanning their book into the system, because the books are in the system, but not, they haven't all been reviewed. And, um, and then with the scanners, the ISB, your ISBN number is, if I'm a publisher for a book, and we both publish like Three Little Pigs, right, or Goldilocks or something like that, my ISBN number might be different from your ISBN number. So it was really much easier for me to type in the title of the book and then pull it up, and then I could see that over a half dozen people had already put in, under various different ISBN numbers, but with that title, request a review, but it had been reviewed. And, um, so I made some, some phone calls, uh, reached out, um, and was able to speak to a board member from Clay County. She put me in touch with, um, their, um, Deputy Superintendent of, of Schools, and I reached out to, and I, to also, also reached out to state leadership for school boards, as well as other, other counties. I know St. John's and Clay County are both, instead of going in and putting in books, and so they're like, what books can we not have? What books do we need to take off the shelf? And it's been brought to my attention that there is a list of fifty-five books. It's called, it's a Freedom, Florida book list. They work with the Department of, of Education. They are aware of this list. And so Clay County has just pulled those fifty-five books from their shelves. So if you've got any of these fifty-five books, pull them, and then they're processing, and they, um, have a very engaged citizen who is, um, very eager to pull lots of books, and so has made lots of inquiry. But they haven't pulled all of those three hundred books that have come forth. They've started with this fifty-five. And in my conversation yesterday, it was like, oh, I could just put in my computer, do I have this book? I could go pull that book. And then I could open my library up. I think that would make it easier for, for teachers as well with their, with their classroom library set. But I was very discouraged yesterday at the, just a mail of work that it was, and after three hours, I mean, I had only done like three little cubbies, and, and it's overwhelming for a media specialist, and, um, I believe the district needs to step back and, and evaluate how we are implementing the legislation that is from the state, and do our best to quickly get books in the hands of students. And so I know that's a rant, but, um, I, I was, I, I'm gonna be curious to see. I was told that my experience at my other two elementary schools in my district this week was gonna be different than the one I had yesterday, which to me is wrong, because I go back to like, you walk into Cracker Barrel, you walk in, you go to Chick-fil-A, um, you know, the Starbucks. There needs to be a uniform directive from the district and not help, help differentials, and that's my rant.
Thank you. Um, actually, Board Member Joyce has her hand up, and I will come over to you.
So, um, is, do they, in Clay County, is that part, is that policy, or is that a procedure? And how do we expedite this? If there is a, the will of the board to get books back in, on shelves, if there's a way that, you know, we can adopt those same practices here in our district?
So, um, I was told when I spoke with a board member from, from Clay County, that they do have policies, so I did ask for a copy of their policies. But I do know that they have a practice of, we've just pulled these fifty-five books that are already on this list. Um, and they even have a, um, review committee that any complaint goes, you know, comes in, this committee reviews it, and, um, at some point, uh, if somebody's made a complaint, they decide not to pull the book, then it can go to the board for, for a vote. So I did ask, uh, when I emailed, uh, Mr. Daley, um, for his, for the policies that Clay County has in dealing with that, um, as well as for the lists, uh, um, that they're using to pull their books.
I had an experience last week. I had an experience last week where I went to a school that has a part-time media specialist. So I waited until she was there. And she said, "Well, bad news. You need my laptop in order to scan and I'm going to be teaching a lesson today to help the principal with ELA standards, so I'm not sure how we're going to do this." So I said, "You know what? Whatever way I can be helpful to you, I'll just be an extra person in here while you teach the ELA lesson." So I didn't get any book scanned, but I did help her with, because the school had a lot of English language learners and she was trying to teach kids who couldn't speak English how to write haiku, poetry, because that's the standard, which is a different conversation. And so I just was the extra person in the media center, which was helpful, but not what I went in to do. I very, very, very recently heard about another school that has a vacancy in the media specialist position and has a lot of volunteers who would like to help. But they, they don't know if they can even help if there's not a media specialist. So what do we do for our schools that don't have a media specialist at all? Does, I was going to send this email, but later. Do, does there have to be a media specialist present in order for volunteers to be working to help in the media center?
So that, if I can understand on from my experience, just that computer, that's right. You, you have to have, you can have a link, but you've got to have, the scanner's got to be plugged into the computer. It's not, like I said, I thought it was going to be like scanning out at the grocery store.
I did too. I was going to knock it out.
So I'm just, so I'm sharing this and I think what happens is, is schools have this experience and we don't, we think, like I have my perception that that's how it was and there's a reality we don't hear about.
I just want to say this, as a former textbook manager for Duval County, I like that y'all have been in and scanning stuff. I've spent many a summer in a book room scanning books. But anyway, it's good to know y'all are, y'all are with us. Go ahead.
I, I, I'm curious to know if we, so it's pretty obvious that we are not going to be complete with this process in time. So I'm wondering if anyone knows or if anyone has had conversations with DOE about the consequences to the district for not being complete.
So what I will do at this point is, we do have district staff here. They've noted this information. I feel confident that they are trying, they'll want to know what school and all that kind of good stuff, so we'll let them.
I'm just thinking, I mean, just one school alone is going to take three hundred and ten days and we've got till the end of June.
Yeah, we'll let them work through that. On that note, I'm going to do the last one, which is empowerment, which is junior achievement. I just want to give you all a heads up that junior achievement, I've encouraged them to reach out to each of you. Have a new initiative they're working on that will assist us. They're already partners in regards to, you know, financial literacy and whatnot with the new state law that was passed. And now we're waiting on the FDOE to do their thing and put it all together. They're excited about being a part of it, but they actually have a capital campaign that they're going to be working on that will allow for a financial center, basically where children will go for a day and spend. There'll be storefronts and all that kind of good stuff. Anyway, it's incredible, I've spoke, I was with the downtown Rotary yesterday. They had them come speak about it. Rotary's excited, everybody's excited about it. So when they reach out to you, please set a meeting up. You'll be excited about it. It's, it's along the lines of workforce development and financial literacy. It kind of dovetails the two together and it's really, really a cool thing. I know they've already worked with Dr. Krisner a little bit on it as well. And so it's just an exciting thing for children that should be coming down the pipe in a few years in Duval. So with that-
One more.
Oh, my gosh.
Sorry, Southside State's groundbreaking tomorrow at four. Please come if your schedule permits.
All right.
Where is Southside State's?
It's off Southside Boulevard, where that overpass, like the walkway is. You turn on that street and you go through a neighborhood.
All right.
Oh, the, the directions, if you Google, will take you to a park.
Oh, okay, that's good to know, see?
Good to know.
So it's, I can't, I will send out the name of the street, but it's where the, Ivy, thank you.
And leave it to Warren Jones to know the name of the city street. With that, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting. Second, I have a motion by Vice Chair Pearson and a second by Board Member Carney. All those in favor, signal by yay. Any opposed? That motion passes six zero and we will be back in touch in the next meeting.
The school behind the park. Travel law.
Yes, that's where the school's going to be.